Where we at? There we are, Monday the 24th. Hey, Mr. Flynn.
Turn your video off a bit.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 24th, 2025 Meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We have just been through a paperwork session. We'd like to start this meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Up first, we need to have Oath of Office for the newly elected, re-elected members, which Diane, you've already been sworn in?
It was, yes.
Okay, perfect, so it's me. Laura Mills?
Yes, sir.
Do the honors?
Yes.
Yeah, everyone's stuck with me for three more years.
All right. Today, on March 24th, 2025, you, F. Robert Leary, do solemnly swear to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform the duties incumbent upon you of said office of selectman through your term to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations, the constitutions and laws of this state of New Hampshire, and rules and regulations of the town of Litchfield. So, help me bow.
I do. That it?
Congrats.
Welcome back. All right. Up next. Oh, he is here, perfect. Mr. Lynch.
Thanks.
Come have a seat at the table.
Come on up, Kevin.
Come on.
Uh-oh, he's in trouble now.
You could give him to her.
Multiply.
I'm not coming out there. I don't like you that much.
So, great. In honor of your six years serving on this board, you're an invaluable member and your knowledge to the town of Litchfield goes far beyond what a lot of people understand and know, but I happen to know, having known you forever. I'd like to present this to you for recognition of six years of dedicated service to the citizens of Litchfield, Litchfield Board of Selectmen, March 2019 to March 2025. Hand your name tag. You can hang it on your bathroom door. Kim. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. A pleasure. I'll take mother on that cruise. All right, up next, we need to have Oath of, not Oath of Offices, I'm sorry, organizational meeting. We need to elect a new Chair for bylaws, two-year limit, and so we need an election for a Chair and a Vice Chair, and then we need to go into the Liaisons and Commissions. So, I'll open the floor to nominations for Chair.
D.O.S.
For the Board of Selectmen, yeah.
I'd like to nominate John Brunel for Chairman of Board of Selectmen.
We have a nomination for John Brunel. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second for Ms. Plansky. I would also like to nominate Kim Queenen for Chair. Do we have a second? No seconds?
Fine.
Okay. All those in favor of John Brunel as Chair, say aye.
Say aye. Probably vote for yourself, we only have a Board of Five.
I'm staying. That's right. So, John Brunel is our new Chair for Board of the Board. Vice Chair. We have nomination for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Steve Gannon.
We have nomination for Steve Gannon. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further nominations?
Yep, I'm fine.
You're fine?
Yep.
All those in favor of Steve Gannon, say aye.
Aye.
Host. Steve Gannon is the new Vice Chair for Board Vote. Very well. Should we do the big shuffle now?
I'm comfortable, I'm staying right here.
All right, perfect.
We have to, who's, you need to be here, right?
Yeah, I'll move over the next time.
Okay.
Did you want to do bylaws, though, because this affects?
No, we'll move that into the regular, into the regular meeting.
But doesn't it affect who goes on what commission?
No, we don't have anyone that's been on committees for Board, other than myself from Budget.
Okay, I thought that, I only added it because I thought you wanted to say nobody could say more than two consecutively.
Yeah, we were going to do it during the regular, the regular, yeah, because we postponed it from before. The election, John Brunel wanted to wait until we had the new Board elected to discuss. Okay? Mr. Brunel, I turn it over to you.
Just catching up, hang on. See if they have any more changes in the minutes here.
All right. I will keep track of the score of it for you when we do Liaisons.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so we're moving to, well, do you want to, with all the people that are here, why don't we, can't we just defer Liaisons till towards the end in the business part, and just have that conversation separately? There's no reason we have to resettle today, or even this hour. I'd rather get through the Heritage Commission's presentation, get the reassessment part.
How do you guys feel about it?
What do you think? Get out of here earlier? It won't be a 16-minute meeting, but, you know. So, if everyone's okay with that, let's bring the Heritage Commission up and do their update, and then we'll take reevaluation next. Does that make sense? You want to make sure George can do it next? He's offline right now, that's why I'm saying. I mean, you can certainly hear us, so.
Hello there.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Marion Colby, 318 Charles Bay, Rock Highway, Chairman of the Heritage Commission. So, tonight, I'm just updating everybody. I think everybody's familiar with the Heritage Commission, established in 2018 by a warrant article, consists of five committee members and up to five alternates. We're to, are, we're charged with advising and assisting other local boards and commissions, conducting inventories, educating the public on matters relating to historic preservation, and providing information on historic resources. Our other function is to support the demolition ordinance for buildings that are over a certain size and over 50 years old, to advise as to whether they are architecturally, culturally, or historically significant. And the purpose of this is to possibly delay any consideration for demolition while we look at other preservation options or alternatives to demolition. So, that's our background. We also have, we also have our powers, which are pretty limited, but survey and inventory all cultural resources, conduct any research as needed, assist planning board as requested in the development and review of those sections of the master plan which address cultural and historic resources, advise upon requests local agencies and other local boards in their review of requests on matters affecting or potentially affecting cultural and historic resources, coordinate activities with appropriate service organizations and nonprofit groups, publicize our activities. We can receive gifts of money and property, both real and personal, in the name of the town, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, and such gifts to be managed and controlled by the Commission for its proper purpose. Full meetings and hearings necessary to carry out duties. So, that's our background. What we have been, our update is just that, let's see, in the past year, we worked on, in collaboration with the Historical Society, we worked on setting up a Historic District Committee to explore the idea of setting up a Historic District in the old part of town. We worked kind of hard on that and came up with some proposed warrant articles and different variations on those as we, as we fine-tuned them. And we worked with Damon Carra from the Nashua Regional Planning Council, and as it turned out, we decided not to go forward with it for this March, and we will, you know, work on it a little bit more and try to bring it forward next year. The Historical Society was instrumental in having the archaeological survey done at the Old Town Center and the muster ground, and, you know, with the support of the Heritage Commission. Of course, it was, you know, the financial support came from the town, from, through the Board of Selectmen, and I think it turned out to be very worthwhile with what was discovered there and all the things that were uncovered. We had a, the chief investigator had a, did a very nice presentation, which we had over at the fire station, and it was very well attended, it had standing room only, and we're hoping that this summer, we're going to work with the Conservation Commission in turn and have him, or her, inventory all of the sites there at the Old Town Center. And they'll be, you know, put together with QR codes so anybody who's walking through there can look at, you know, the history of each of those little areas and see what they all were, and hopefully get, you know, some sort of outline so people can see the dimensions of the old buildings and so forth. That's one project. We're working with a former town resident named John Crowse, who I think now lives in an adjoining town, but he's been doing a significant amount of research on Chief Passakonaway. And it is pretty commonly held that he, Chief Passakonaway, well, we know for sure that he owned a great deal of land in Litchfield, along both sides of the river, so Litchfield and Merrimack. And he, he spent his summers on the islands and the river. And that's pretty common knowledge, but John Crowse is looking extensively to find absolute proof of that. The end goal would be to put up one of those historic markers that, you know, would tell anybody traveling on 3A that, you know, what, you know, the importance of that particular site. Right now, there's a little bit of a problem because the state has put all of those historic markers on hold, and they're re, like, redetermining what the best process is for getting those historic markers and the whole procedure for it. So, until they come up with a new, you know, set of rules for it, we really kind of stopped on that. And, but John Crowse is still continuing to work on it. He gave us a very good presentation with all of the research he's done so far, and it is pretty extensive. We may consider trying to have him do something more town-wide. I mean, it was, it was done at a meeting, so it was publicized. I mean, it was on, you know, on CCTV, I guess, but I don't think our viewership is really up to snuff yet. And we've also started a project to educate the public about our remarkable history dating back to 1734. And we started with the five buildings that the Historical Society worked very, very hard to get onto the State Historic Register. And so, we're doing histories of each of the buildings, and, and we started out with the church, the old church down at the town center, and we know a good bit about the history of that building. And other things have come in, we haven't moved on with the other buildings yet, but we're hoping to do a lot of buildings in town, especially along the main, what we would have, you know, probably in, what we would like to have in a Historic District, so that people can know about the history of these buildings and, you know, what the architecture is and, you know, how, what we know about what, you know, who built them and so forth. So, hopefully, we'll continue with that in, this year. And that's up, that, now, the other thing we're doing is working with the Historical Society, and hopefully, you know, we're going to drag, we're going to try to invite in all of the other boards and commissions in town to work with us on a celebration for the 250th anniversary of the country. And we, we called a kickoff meeting some time ago, and it was very poorly attended because I guess it was early on, and people, you know, kind of thought, well, it was maybe too early on. So, we'll start doing that, you know, we'll start now that it's within, you know, like, within eyesight, it's only a year off. And so, we'll start early this summer and try to make some firm plans on that. We have some ideas, and we, you know, we've, we'll just try to get all of the other, well, the boards and commissions, like Recreation Department, and try to get Spirit of Litchfield, and then some of the other, other organizations, like the Lions Club and some other organizations involved, so that, you know, we can have a nice town-wide celebration. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just wanted, maybe have you clarify something. The whole thing with the Historic District, a lot of people are complaining, saying, "You're not going to be able to paint your house a color, you're not going to be able to do this, you're not going to be able to do that." I know, knowing you guys, this isn't the case, so can you just say it out loud?
Right. Well, we were told when we started the Heritage Commission that we were the only town in the Nashua Regional Planning Council that does not have a Historic District. So, when I asked if people were interested in serving on a committee, you know, to explore this idea, we got quite a few people who were not involved in the Historical Society or the Heritage Commission to come in, and, and we started out with everybody investigating one town in the Nashua Regional Planning Council and, like, looking at what their Historic District is. Now, some of them are very, very restrictive, you know, as to paint color, type of, like, yard lights you can have, kind of fencing, et cetera, et cetera. That is not our goal. Our goal is basically to really prevent demolition when properties are sold. So, the current owners of the properties, we're not trying to stop them from doing anything. We don't care what color they paint their house, we don't care if they put a fence up, we don't care. We're not interested in that, we're interested in preser, we've lost several old houses in town, very historically significant. And, I mean, sometimes it can't be helped, but sometimes, you know, we've come up with good options, but, you know, money is the bottom line, and we couldn't, you know, convince anybody to, and we have no budget, so we have no, you know, no tools to really, in our arsenal here, to, you know, to get, to, to offer anybody, so it's kind of hard. But that, that's really our goal, is just to preserve the property so that if, you know, if a piece of land is sold, that the new person buying it would automatically know that working, you know, working that old building into their plans is something that they will need to do, and that it isn't an option to just take it down because they don't like it. And that, that's basically what it is, so it's very not, it's not, it's the least restrictive that we could possibly be. But thank you for asking that, because there was a lot of, but when, you know, our goal was that if we got, if we got it to the point where we were going to put it forth as a warrant article, we were planning to do a lot of education and meet with people and have, you know, and whatever we needed to do to get the word out about it, but we never got to that point. So, we withdrew it at that time because we had a lot of pushback, as they say.
I believe, I think when you went in front of the planning board, I think you were asked directly, have you solicited the owners of those properties that are in the district that you're?
No.
Probably be a good place to start. I mean, those are, some of them are long-time families.
We'll take that under advisement.
They might like it. They get a little plaque, right, for their house?
No, I don't think they're getting a little plaque. I mean, we're not asking those owners, we're not asking those owners to do anything at all. I don't care if they paint their house purple, I mean, we don't care what they do. They could put new windows, they could put siding, they can do whatever they want to do. So, we're not really asking them for any special consideration. We're just asking that when that property is sold, and probably of the houses in that district, you know, not every single one of them is going to be considered to be historically, architecturally, or culturally significant. So, some of them, we, we won't, you know, it won't matter. Some of them, it will. So, that's our, that's our plan right now, but that's, like I said, that's why we withdrew it, so that we could work on it some more.
Okay. I mean, I, it's a good effort either way, right? But you gotta get the voters to agree to it.
Well, it was something that was brought up in the master plan. When that master plan was accepted, that was something that was brought up, that there should be a Historic District. That's one of the things that we should be working on as a Heritage Commission, and so we, but our, I was limited in how I could recruit people to work on it, since as a member of the Heritage Commission, I cannot post things, like, on the main avenue that people in town use to post things. But as a member of the Historical Society, I could post something, which I did, to recruit people to come in and work on this committee, and like I said, we've got quite a few people that were willing to come and help us. And, and part of, you know, what I read to you in our bylaws and our, you know, powers is that we can work with other nonprofit organizations and service organizations in town. So, we're within our rights to work with the Historical Society on something. I know that there's been complaints that there's overlap between the Historical Society and the Heritage Commission, and I'm, I'm sorry about that, but in a town as big as our town is, it's kind of sad that the same few people are interested in being on committees and boards and organizations. If, if people don't like it, then hey, come and join us.
Great. I think getting the message out sooner, education, we gotta figure out how to give you the tools to do that, whether it's, how do you work with the town to get more publications out there for people?
Right, and I, I mean, I know, it's been difficult for everybody that's on boards and commissions to get the word out about things, because, you know, without a newspaper or a town crier, I mean, it's a little hard.
That's right.
You have an army of people that sit in their basement, and they're very vocal, and they're very brave, but when it comes time to put your face out there, all of a sudden, it gets scarce.
Exactly, so we're, we're working on our projects, and we hope to, you know, continue this year.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
House members?
No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
All right, so if it makes sense, let's transition to the 2025 revaluation startup meeting with Avatar Associates and Sancucci Associates and the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Admin. So, we just gotta get, there's George. Hey, George, just a quick sound check, you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, as I said, anything you put on your screen, the public will see. So, we'll follow around, follow along with you here. And I'm coming inside to go figure what's going on with this thing.
Okay, so you have Lauren Martin from Avatar.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi, how are you?
New Hampshire D.R.A., and George San Sancucci from San Sancucci Associates. There are a number of documents that we've put on your portal.
There you did.
So, I will try to, sorry about that. I will try to bring those up as they're discussed. Thinking we're starting off with Lauren.
Yeah. How are you all this evening?
Good.
So, just wanted to, the Board has changed over time, so it's always nice to come in and, and do the update of what the process is in a town-wide reassessment. I, I gave Kim in advance all the copies of everything that I had, but the frequently asked questions that I did send you as well, we probably could put that up on the website, maybe, so taxpayers that have those general questions can get some of that answered without hopefully having to bother anybody for that. So, just wanted to give you an overview of the whole process, so you'd know. It's a big year this year with the update. We've already started some of the work, we've been out doing some of the sales verification up to date, but we'll continue that process in April, getting all of the sales verified. Through that process, we only use arms-length sales transactions, so short sales foreclosures, sales to family members, you know, a sale from the town to an entity, we wouldn't use those sales in there. We're looking for those fair market sales transactions. So, we'll get all, the rest of the sales verified, so that the data is all accurately listed on the record. And then in April, I'll be working on sales analysis and model calibration and specification to get your CAMA system up to date for the new values. Once we get the new model built based on the new sales data, then we go out, it would be myself as supervisor with another assessor, and we will drive the entire town and with copies of all the record cards, verifying all the data that's previously been collected over the past so many years. Just making sure that's, and that's kind of in my frequently asked questions packet as well. People always say, "They just did a drive-by assessment." Well, we've been collecting data cyclically over the past so many years in town, so this is that last year where we bring everything to market value. So, we just do a final check, and we're comparing all of the non-sale properties to the sale properties to make sure everything is graded consistently and just accurately listed on the record. So, they'll see my car around, they're used to me driving up their driveway and turn around and drive, you know. Litchfield's fairly easy to get around, and, and so I'm not going up too many driveways or getting anyone stirred up too much, but we let the town know when we're here. I'm planning on the 12th through the 23rd, that, those weeks, to do field review, but we let the police department know, we'll let the town know, so that if anyone has questions, my car is marked. They've been through it, most people in town, I think this will be my, maybe, maybe my fifth go around. I don't want to say that, because we do it every five years, so that makes me, dates me very fast. But, yeah, it's probably our, at least, fifth. So, once we get that process all done and entered, we get everything finalized, and we send out notices to every one of their preliminary values. At, at that time, we've started doing some other process with that as well. And right in the letter, we will put in there the overall percent change. So, that's a pretty common question, people, we used to send a notice, here's your new value, and they had no real idea what that meant. How, how is that going to affect my pocketbook, essentially? So, we started putting a percent change in. So, if the total value of the town went up 40%, we put that in there. The, right now, preliminarily, values are up 40% on average. And then that way, when the taxpayer gets their letter and they can see their percent change, they have an idea of what that impact means to them. If their value went up 60% and the total was 40, their taxes are going to go up. If they were at the 40, their tax burden should stay about the same, unless we voted in a new school I don't know about. So, as long as spending.
Not a police station.
Exactly, so as long as spending stayed roughly the same, then, and you go up the same percentage, you shouldn't see a change in your, in your tax burden. And if you're less than what that total is, then you should see your taxes go down. So, it gives them an indication of that, because that's the, the tough thing, is that we don't know what that tax rate's going to be until we get all of the values finalized for the town. So, we're trying to make things better, year after year, more data out there. We put together a Preliminary Use Pap Report, which is the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice. We put together a Preliminary Report that has the sales that we've used, that has the spreadsheets of how we developed base land and building values, and we put all that information up online, so when they get the letter, they have the link, they can go look at all the data that's out there. We want them to have as, as many tools in their toolbox as possible so that they can understand the change in their assessment and why it changed. Did everyone change? So, we give them all of that information. Once they get those new value notices, they have an opportunity to set up an appointment to discuss their assessment. Over the past year since COVID, we've done a lot of hearings on the phone, and we can do a mix, we can do it all here. The phone has worked well in the sense that they can be wherever, they don't have to drive to Town Hall to have a meeting. So, I, I'm not opposed to doing it hybrid for, whatever they want. If they want, you know, if taxpayers are okay with a phone call, it's more convenient for them, we can do a phone call. If they want to come meet with me, we'll come down, we'll be here for a meeting, so we can do a hybrid for the hearings, I think, if whatever's good for the taxpayers, good for us, as long as I note that, so I don't forget that I said that.
Lauren, if you're doing a phone call, are they calling here to connect with you, or are you giving out a number for them to use?
It depends on if we, how we're going to do that. Normally, they would log on, set up their appointment, and then we would call them.
Call them, okay.
Yeah, so whether we're doing it from here or off-site, either way. So, maybe we'll designate so many days here, and then so many days for people that want a phone appointment. The people that are right in town that can come in easily, that, you know, works out great, the people that may be working in Massachusetts for the day, it's not so easy to get away from work to come up here for, you know, a 15-minute or a half-hour meeting with the assessor, so. We've found it works well. And then our, our plan would be to have it turned over the week of September 1st, so that we can get your MS-1 done. But I say that, and Skip's going to play a portion of that because his utility values would have to be ready for the MS-1 part, so that, that part will be up to Skip once we do that. But we'll have the assessment part turned over, we're hoping for that first week of September. But we'll have the assessment part turned over, we're hoping for that first week of September. And then throughout the process, DRA is gonna go behind us and they're going to be checking all of our work as the oversight and monitoring body. But in that packet, I had sent over the state's assessment review package. And they have a sheet in there, I'm not sure what page it is in that, because I think it was like multiple screens, but they have a, a package that is all the criteria they're gonna be basically doing their report card on the town to, to report how we did on, on the job. As well as how the town is taking care of their general assessing practices, their exemptions and credits, the current use properties in town. So they come in at some point, they'll work with Karen to make sure all the files are up to date, that exemptions, credits have all been reviewed as required at least once every five years. So they'll, they'll work with the town on that part. But many of the things on this report card have a direct result of what we've done for the update. So the goal is to get the assessments to a hundred percent of market value. So when we're all done, it has to fall between ninety and a hundred and ten percent with a ten percent confidence interval. The COD, they're gonna check that, the coefficient of dispersion, so that, you know, we're looking at that target and how everyone's property relates to that target. So they're checking all those sales to see how those statistics stack up. And they're also checking the price-related differential, and that's gonna be between point nine eight and one point oh three. So we're shooting for one on that as well. And that's just making sure that we're treating all classes of property similarly. High end to low end, so that we're, we're doing that. They'll also check over our USEPAP report and they're gonna go out and check the field work on everything we've done.
That's correct.
To make sure that I'll let you take that part.
So, so the, the department's way that we monitor things is that, you know, they've been out looking at properties and, and it's in the contract, so we're looking for contract compliance. So me, one of my people from the department, we'll send out postcards, we'll do a random sample of properties. They'll go out and physically knock on doors and that kind of stuff, we'll let everybody know, we'll let the police know. And on the postcard, there's a, a number for them to call if they don't want us to come. So eventually, we'll write up a report, it will go to Avatar first, just in case there's any discrepancies, and then it will end up in your hands.
Okay.
And we also review the USEPAP report, make sure it has all the components and stuff in there for people to understand everything. I just had a, a question about the, the contract. I couldn't tell if there's a bond required.
And I didn't bring the contract, but no.
I, I see, like normally you guys check it off here.
No bonding.
No bond required, okay.
It gets sent off to you before we verify that, it looks like.
Yeah, well, I'm just making sure that everybody knows.
Yeah, yeah, we've been doing, I don't know, like I said, I date myself, but I think we've been in Litchfield for almost thirty-five years, so.
Been a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
We are all much younger than you.
Yes, a lot less grace in there.
And I, I have this checklist that we do, but I'm not gonna go over everything, there's really not, uh, there's just a few things. Are you guys only using one year for sales? There's a sales range that they use to get a value as of April first of 2025.
Correct, and I think we have plenty of sales that we will, we'll focus on the most recent year's sales. If we need to expand in any-
So like four, one, twenty-four, two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, if we need to go back in any, you know, sometimes a specific, say condo development or, you know, we may have to expand, but we try not to, because then we have to account for differences in time, because the older sales we go, then we just have to trend them forward, so like to rely on the most recent sales data.
Mm-hmm, and do you, is Avatar charged with like entering all the data into the system?
We do all the data entry, yes.
All right.
Sorry, I usually have your little outline and answer back before you get to you.
And you said you do in a field review? That's, that's fine, it's kind of like, say it for these folks so they know.
Yes, absolutely.
Has, have all of you been through a revale before?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you get, they, they got their new tax.
As a customer.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as a select person, you know.
Yes, exactly.
Because what she was talking about, the field review part, you may be getting calls about, you know, the assessor never got out of the car, how are they supposed to do the assessing? And that's just an extra component to, um, yeah, bionic vision, no, just to keep everything uniform and that kind of stuff, it's like common practice and that kind of thing. And do you guys have any, like, are you putting the word out there? I, I know we're on TV, so.
I think we should.
They don't know, now they know.
Choose you on the website.
Uh, website.
So we have been advertising this meeting for weeks.
Yeah.
Since I now have gotten your frequently asked questions and, and I'd like, this is a tentative timeline, we can put that out there, but we recently switched to a brand-new website. I would like to get as much as possible out there, that's not what I'm used to. We've generally had a notice that we've posted, you know, on when there's an assessor out there, what the assessor's car might say and, and all that type of things, that's a good thing to have on the website as well. I think the board, we certainly talked about when the equalization ratio came down. We've talked about the coefficient of dispersion, we've talked about a lot of things. So I think we've tried to educate. We had a financial series that we did last year for the public, so we've, we've tried to talk about things like that. So we certainly want to put as much information-
One, one other good thing to maybe put out there, and they probably have something that they use, is that they shouldn't be taking the, the old tax rate and multiplying it by the new value.
Well, they can, but get ready for the heart attack.
Get ready for phone calls.
Yeah.
Well, good, good question, because, so I had a call. I thought I knew pretty much a lot on the DRA website, but I called the other day from a resident who saw this, the full comparison-
Yep.
of full value tax rates. And so the resident wanted to know if, if that would be the tax rate. And I said, considering this is 2023,
No.
No. And can, this isn't our equalization ratio any, any longer either. But I wasn't familiar with this report that was put out by the, the DRA.
Probably neither am I.
It's just, it's just taking the actual tax rate and the equalization ratio to get you a hundred percent what the
Right.
indicated tax rate is. Yeah, they-
And it feels like they do it for everyone.
Yep.
But considering it's, it's old and it's not the equalization ratio any longer, I told the resident, no.
Right, and so you, do we have the finalized for twenty-four? We do, right?
We do.
I have too many towns in it.
For this guy here?
The equalization ratio?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that like sixty-five, right there?
Yep, sixty-five point four four, so.
So the, you know, the, there's nothing you can do about the median ratio, it's all reflective of the market.
Right.
The, good news is the coefficient of dispersion and the PRD are both still good, you know. So the, you know, the relation to the median ratio, all the sales and stuff are kind of hovering around it, which is good. And PRD is the relation of low value and high value, you know, and those are all pretty right on, so.
So your current rate is twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents? And with a ratio of sixty-five point four four? The indic-, oh, I didn't do my math right, times thirteen sixty is the effective rate.
That was just lower than that, because the equalization went down.
Right.
But, so that was the only question really that I've gotten.
I'm sure I can find.
We've had, we've had quite a few questions as to when people will have information and-
Soon.
and that sort of information, but.
Yeah, we do it pretty early here because we do have significant data. That said, we, I mean, we have few and far properties on the market here, you know, so it's, they barely have time to put the sign out, you know, anymore and they're gone, so. But we usually do it early here, we've always had a good COD and PRD here. You know, it's a pretty homogeneous community, we don't have a ton of commercial development. You know, it's a largely rural residential community, so it, it's held. I, I think one of the first ones I did here, there hadn't been a reassessment in almost twenty years. So when that, you know, it's a big change. Now we've been doing it every five, so people are, are more familiar with it. Values come up, tax rate comes down, don't, don't have the heart attack. But we wanna give them more information, because that's a pretty common statement. Since COVID, we've seen some real big shifts in some of those classes of property. So the more affordable housing options, your manufactured homes, we've seen those go up more than we've seen the high-end stuff go up. So everything's likely to go up, you know, as long as it still continues the way it's been going. But those more affordable housing options are gonna be, be hit harder. And that's nothing that we're targeting necessarily, it's just what we're analyzing in the sales and we've seen it since, since COVID. You know, we have a housing crisis going on in the state and limited affordable housing options, which has driven the cost up. It's just the economics of supply and demand, so it's not that anything that we are, you know, trying to do to anybody. It's, you know, just analyzing those sale properties, so.
Yeah, and the, the few sales that we have on our equalization study here does reflect that manufactured housing is, you know.
Forty-seven point six nine percent.
Yeah, and that's probably even lower, because this is a little bit dated.
Right.
So forty-five percent as opposed to sixty.
The rest of the town at sixty-five, so even if we're just talking that, they're gonna go up more percentage-wise, which means tax increase, and sadly, it all ends up on that final bill, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know, I know, right, Merry Christmas. Yeah, I mean, there's, until we come up with another way in the state, you know, it, it's what we're, we're stuck with sadly, but. Did you still have more, I kind of-
No, just, I was looking, I was looking at the exemptions and credit amounts. And I'm not sure when there's, these were last updated, and it looks like, like for the elderly, it's like eighty-five thousand, for sixty-five to seventy-four, seventy-five to seventy-nine's a hundred and forty thousand, and eighty-plus is a hundred and ninety thousand. You know, the state doesn't really make recommendations on what you guys do, but we just wanted to, you know.
We had a resident come forward a couple months ago, and the board was actually questioned, and I said, after the revale, we can look at something for the next warrant. Which leads us to the other, so we're a tax cap community, so we use the estimate of the value on the MS1 for determining where we think our tax cap is going to be. And we generally present the budget to the board generally around the first of August. So that'll be another factor that we'll kind of look to you for, so that we can have relatively a, a good idea of what that estimated value will be.
Yep.
Okay, and she had spoken about, this is your assessment review year. We're just gonna be basically trying to, you know, check, check the health of the, you know, the, the assessments in general. There's a couple of things that we do, one's for field work, it's accuracy of data, we go out and measure some more random properties. Also, take a look at the, you know, permitting process, like your new construction and stuff like that. Is everything good as of April first, because that's the, the capture date for, for taxes, for property taxes. We do come in and take a sampling of your, of your, you know, your credits, your exemptions, your institutional exemptions, which are your religious, educational, and charitable. Those are, you know, filed annually, so we'll be looking back five years for those, checking on those. Your current use, I'm not sure how much current use you guys have here or not, but.
Fair amount.
Fair amount? Okay, sounds good. And who does the files here? Who's charged with?
So the property record files?
Yeah, because I might wanna have a meeting with them at some point, just to go over what we're looking for. A little more in depth, because this is not really the-
Right, so I mean, the actual, between our building inspector and Donna, they actively maintain, since she does all the filing and putting things into the property record files. Both Heather and Donna have been actively, I think you all know from the amount of paperwork that you've gotten, they've been going through the exemptions and the credits and recertifications and things of that sort, so they've been working.
So if they ever wanna know more or feel they need a tutorial on, you know, what we would be looking for, or anything like that, they can feel free to contact me, I have a, a good staff who are really good at communicating that type of thing. Also, she was also on the Assessing Standards Board, who made these things, so she's also a good resource if you guys have any questions, so.
Thank you.
Good.
You're welcome.
And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay.
About George.
So new to us last year was the utility work, which is being done by George Sansoussi, who did our most recent values. And he's here to speak to you a little bit about the utility values.
He does exist.
Mr. Sansoussi?
I'm fine, thank you.
I am the utility preparation group from town. We're working on a contract that includes this revaluation to the property. Excuse me. As you know, started it last year. We actually constructed a utility model for this revaluation last year. Ran it and used it for the utility for values. But it is now built in concert with Long, her new lands for your investments. You folks have a total of utilities in town. New England Power Company, New England Hydro Transmission, which is the biggest DC line. Liberty Utilities for gas, Unsoldier Communications and Telephones. Ever so is our, when Penn and Chuck is water and gas. Each is either total or in part, depending on laws. Give you an idea of what's happened. Last year, you had seventy-nine million dollars of utility property in the town. And that had to be assessed at fifty-six million dollars because of the equalization rate that Long was discussing. The utilities, the equalization rate for utilities, not crack. The equalization rate of houses and commercial building sales in town. But under the actual law, we must apply the equalization rate through the utility, or you're going to get a yield that you cannot. So you have to, you have to equalize it each year. Value is linked and equalized each year, because the rate of utilities for utility properties is different depending on the increase for houses. And that can go two ways, one is it doesn't look as much. The other is the company, uh, company, I put substantial amounts of new property around for uncoordinated, as we speak. There is a major overhaul to be built of all the efficiency systems in the United States. New Hampshire is showing different, that the source is rebuilding its entire efficiency as well as adding to its distribution system. The size of the land is the big high back line. And the two outdoor, New England Power side, straddle each side. And the two outward, New England Power, side, straddle each side, line, PC line, Canada. Those lines were actually built in nineteen twenty-three when they built the hydroelectric lines up on the Connecticut River. And they have been completely reconstructed and completely overhauled for another thirty-two fifty years of life. By the company. Because they bring down about six hundred megawatts of hydroelectric power. It comes from the Connecticut River, all the way down to Boston. And then back into New Hampshire. So what we will do is basically get the information from the company through a direct request. We drive the community to what has been built, because we can generally see it. Then one portion of our job is to push the company for information. Lauren pointed out that he wants to close the rebuild in September. Utilities are very bullish, providing information to sound companies. They're getting more so as time goes on. So we spend a lot of time pushing them for information to meet deadlines. Which is one reason we wanted to build the project last year, which we did, to make it go quicker. That model tends to miss due date, as former BOWI used that before. So it is in their possession. We don't see any problems whatsoever with the system, with the valuations. Under the, the BTLA, during a revaluation, it will go back up to a hundred percent. Therefore, the utility profit can expect will at least up to eight million. Up from fifty-six million by virtue of the application rate alone. And then any addition to the valuation will be additive to the utility values. That kind of covers it. You do have distribution and transmission from all the counties. The distribution for electric and water, gas, is actually informed by what we call House Rule seven hundred. Which is the new formula that came out of the last trial of ninety-six communities that were sued by public service. And a formula came out of, had a full hundred percent formulation in twenty twenty-five. And that formula worked well. The towns and cities gave up only twelve and a half percent of the value, spread over five years. And the final formulation in the legislative committee represented all of our, in that proceeding. We were very satisfied. Companies wanted about a sixty percent reduction to hold twelve and a half percent. And that was watched out, new growth in the last two weeks. Lauren is still with us, building her life. One thing we do, the other place we don't, we value the utility land. Value the plan, Lauren, and plan schedule. More importantly, the IGII value, the transmission line. Don't usually escape tax. Do not now, we have, we have valued them last year. Avatar, and they are now on the tax. They will be completely valued in the revaluation this year with foreign land rent and value. But the model is set up to do that. So that the land is, you're getting now the full value. So the people that, you know, the backland acreage and the, what they call a suburban estate use are to keep the transmission lines being valued to the landowner. But then the utility is picking up its fair share of the land they are inheriting with the transmission lines. So that kind of completes it. Do we have any questions? It was a handout, we provided, gives you the number, like the amount, okay?
I have it up so the people at home can see it.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
More for Kim.
Simon Queenen has a question.
Just general, so you're doing an assessment of the whole town. It's going to include this new utility.
Skip's going to do that portion of that.
So it goes up twenty million dollars to correct it. But that helps us, right? Because it gets the true valuation of the town. So we, our tax rate, we based on where we fall.
Right, everything coming to a hundred percent, not just your residential properties, but utility values as well.
So this is good news, so the public hears that?
Yes.
And thank you, Kim Kleiner, because you found that a long time ago, when you first started here. You questioned the utilities, the value of that, and said it was way off. So, well, he helped you do that. Yeah, so thank you both, because that was, that's a lot of money.
Been very good.
One remaining thing that us contract, that we are in, we are in, and we provide your assessing contract mainly with any backstop assistance that she might need with any complex property or complex issues. We are always there and available to her as you're, basically some contract, her in some ways, we've got. But we are available to her as a resource to something that gets a little bit touchy, if she has technical, technologically or whatever, for large commercial properties. So we are a backup throughout, like with our contract with the town, that you also get. Lauren pointed out, we've got a complex community, but every once in a while, something comes up. And we.
So Mr. Sansucci may not know yet, as this will probably be our next big endeavor, but the warrant article that passed.
Right.
And we will look for some of Mr. Sansucci's expertise in that warrant article on researching and studying water.
In the eminent domain, yep.
Probably see a lot of you.
Probably.
He may regret that, we'll say.
Has Kimberly pointed out? I am the expert that took the water company for the Hudson, a number of years ago. Which was in the time, Southern Water. That was my work, and I worked with the city of Nashville, took the water company in forty-three community, stayed in New Hampshire. From, at that time, Penachuk, Penachuk Board, took private public. So we do know exactly what you folks are seeking to learn in looking at the water. We have pointed out, and we hope to.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They'll be seeing a lot of us. Just, as I say, for the record too, when Ben was talking about what he's going to come in and do, hit that report card, just so you know, you probably won't get that report card till sometime into twenty twenty-six because they wait till after the equalization process is complete, so they can report on those statistics as well. So just so.
Yeah, and we have to wait for them to complete their work, which takes most of the year. And then we start our work, which takes forever and a day, so.
Yep.
If anyone is interested.
We start all over again.
The twenty twenty use pap has been in the public viewing room. I took it and did a read, but it's there for the public.
And it's morphed a little bit over time, we keep adding more to it.
If anyone wants to know what that looks like, it's there.
And we send it to you in a PDF as well, so when we're complete, you can put it up on the website, let people, you know, nice bathroom reading material. Yes, well, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Have a great night.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Good night.
Kim, just to wrap up on this topic though, so the website, I guess, I'm assuming we're going to go to the assessment page and add another sub-page with all this stuff on there, right?
So I was thinking, because I think I've heard recently that some people are having difficulty finding things. If maybe we thought about our slider, that currently just has pictures, right? If we could do something, so, you know, twenty twenty-five revaluation and have a link to going to the assessing page and on the assessing page, having all the documents.
That's fine, yeah, I think, yeah, it should be okay. I think we have to talk to them, because I think the slider right now is not linkable, but we can make it linkable, I believe.
I think so.
So, but if you can create the, that sub-page and get all this stuff there.
Absolutely.
That'd be a good way to get the attention, and then we can get it published out on social media too at that point. And that'll be the landing page for the time being, I guess. We also can probably use the banner on top to notify the residents of they're driving through the town. As maybe a method to do it, and maybe encourage them to subscribe for updates and get a text or message update, so. Some things we can potentially do, yeah, so, okay. All right, so let's transition back to the schedule. Yeah, I'm going to do consent. All right, so we're going to go back to, yeah, I thought we could still do it after the end, towards the end, get through some of this stuff.
Move on to, are you going to go back to the start, or are you going to take care of Cory and stuff first?
I was just going to do consent.
Okay.
Just open for public input and then take care of some of the top business and go back to the constab, the commissions and boards.
Yep.
So, all right, so review, for review approval consent items, we have AP manifest for three eighteen for thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents. Three twenty-five for forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Payroll manifest for three, the week of three twenty, sixty-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen thousand seventy-two cents. For the week of three twenty-seven, sixty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents. We have three elderly exemption renewals. We have two new elderly exceptions, one veteran, one veteran credit denial. Six veteran credit recertifications. A purchase order for CMG Colonial for the police cruiser for the total cost, well, for the cost of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty, sixty cents, sorry, per warrant, per warrant article thirteen. We have the February twenty twenty-five treasury reconciliation. We have the BOs correspondence for the time from March seventh to the twenty-first, available on the portal for review. Anybody want, have any comment or anything they want to remove?
Just one question on the police cruiser for forty-nine, that's not, that does not include.
That's just the accident, that's the car itself, the still fed-up costs that's associated with it too.
Okay.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept for Mr. Leary, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Queenen. Any other questions, sign debate, do a session? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero. I had to get back in the habit of doing this. It's been a long time. Yeah, I probably, I forgot my water today too, I was like, what the heck was I thinking? All right, why don't we go ahead and do the permit for, if there's no objection, we'll go to the July fourth permit?
Oh, are we on the agenda?
You are on the agenda.
I didn't know that.
I figured that's why you're here, Cory. I mean, you don't look like a man, Amber, but I assume you were here for Amber. All right, so on the portal, yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Quinn, Matt Kleiner.
So I just, I, we put it on the portal because we wanted you to know that we had received it. It has gone out to the road agent, the chief of police, and the chief of fire for their review as per the policy. They have not responded yet because we just received it late last week. And so Doug Nickel, the emergency management director, is reaching out to the CERT team to see what availability he will have for staffing. And I think that's a big component of it, but I wanted you to know, we received it, we're working on it very hard. And we hope that we'll have enough CERT staff to assist with the event, of course, it's the Fourth of July.
Right. So the only thing we're waiting, otherwise it's okay, we're just waiting for the CERT.
Yes.
Can we make a motion to approve it pending the approvals in said departments?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion, to approve the Fourth of July parade pending the approvals from town departments.
Second. So motion made by Mr. Leary, second by myself.
On the comment, I'm sure, what would Doug need, maybe another week or two, maybe a month? I mean, we have plenty of time, it's not until July.
Right.
So I'm going to make, shamelessly make a plug for CERT.
Okay.
He mentioned that the interest in the participation has dropped off.
Yep.
This is one of those really important town events that we really need the participation for. So if there's any CERT team members listening out there, please contact.
I'm listening.
And, and he will, if he hasn't already sent an email out, he will certainly be contacting everybody, as well as the Londonderry team, not Star Team, he will contact.
And I believe there's a CERT meeting on the seventh for training.
I don't think I got that notification, but I've been out of the loop because of my broken arm for months.
Yeah, I think it's the seventh, I was asked to attend because they've got their radios, they're going to do radio training too. So I believe that's what's happening. I think it's the seventh, don't quote me.
Yeah, and if there's any members of the public that want to join CERT, definitely attend and get spun up. Something that someone's mentioned to me before, like, they want to do certain things, but they don't want to do everything. You don't have to do it all, you could, if you want to flag in the parade, you can flag in the parade. If you want to go be on the search team, you could be on the search team. The way Doug put it is, they're going to give them your availability and what you're interested in, and they'll try to use that knowledge to their advantage, which wherever they could.
Yep, and it is April seventh, Monday, at Doug's fire station, is the training, so. I assume you'll get some answers at that point too, so. All right, any other discussion? Here and none others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero. Tell Amber she's got her parade, or hopefully got her parade. All right, all right, we'll get back to this. So we open the floor for public input? Anybody from the public click up and speak?
There was supposed to be somebody here for Spirit of Litchfield. She wanted to talk to you, Kim, about getting the notification of the, was she already here?
She was here earlier, yeah.
Oh, she came before the meeting? Oh, good, okay, she was going to be here for public input. She had contacted me, so she's all set.
I believe she wants the board's vote.
She was here to get it on the boards.
She is going to fill out the permit and send it, and I'll send it over to the board.
Okay. Because that's coming right up.
Use of the parking lot for Easter egg hunt?
Um, it was that and use of the town sign. And so there is a permit for use of the town sign. And there is a permit for use of town land, and they are on the website, they can be filled out and emailed in and we'll take care of it.
When's, when's her event, do you know?
It's a couple of weeks, nineteenth of April.
Oh, so we have plenty of time to sign.
Yeah, I bet it's coming up.
You have the next meeting to sign it, yep.
Well, the, can we, can we do a sign application just in the consent folder on Monday, if everybody signs it?
So what we've done in the past is, if it's just a permit for a sign, I will email it to the board, you let me know that there's no problem.
Deal forward it.
I tell the individual and then you publicly do it at your next meeting.
When is Easter, the twentieth, it's coming up? Oh, April twentieth, it's a month away, okay.
You are, for your reappointment?
You're here, you're on it.
Absolutely, we wouldn't forget you.
You can go, you don't have to be here for the reappointment, you can.
Well, if she wants to hear it.
You wanna hear it? We'll do, we'll take it care of right after, oh, good, Cory.
Okay, Cory Flint, 123 Hillcrest Road. A couple of months ago, I was in here, and I, I asked about the sign ordinance as it pertained Albuquerque, and you were gonna look into it, and I didn't see anything on the warrant articles in March. So I'm curious as to, as to if there was any determination made, or any, any thoughts on, on having that changed, or, or changing it in any way?
Albuquerque in century?
The sign ordinance as it applies to Albuquerque.
Albuquerque doesn't, there's no signs allowed.
Oh, 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 yep.
No permanent signs are allowed.
No temporary signs either, I believe, within, within the right of way of the, of the town, which is quite extensive on Albuquerque, 75 feet.
Yeah.
Private property, yes, though, right?
When it was, when it was brought to us, so it's a zoning ordinance change, it would have to go on the warrant, and unfortunately, those are due early December, so it's a really long lead time for a warrant article, I get it. But if it's something the board is interested in, we can certainly have plenty of time now to get it into the 2026 warrant.
So, I understand it's a warrant, I mean, it's a zoning thing, but can the board authorize it? Then how is the school putting their signs out in the end of Albuquerque Hillcrest? Who's authorized that?
Who's?
The school graduation signs, which I totally enjoy, and I think they should remain, but they're there, how are they getting authorization to do that?
I think they're there one evening, right?
Yeah, but isn't that?
Evening, and they're gone.
Isn't that selective? Doesn't matter if it's done or if it's done. It's one evening or one minute, it's against.
Well, that's a, that's a point, and, and I, I know that at one point before, even if the zoning was in place, there was a discussion and debate about campaign signs in front of the school, and we made it very clear that that's the town right of way and our right to allow it to happen for that event. So I think we need to make sure we take care of it, and either.
I know that.
No, I think what they've said is, what they've ruled is, that the school on voting day is not the school, it's an election. And so there's another section of the state law that deals with.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Albuquerque, the bike path, that does not turn into a polling place. I get the polling place law, but, or rule, but, because the school at one point didn't want the signs there, and there was a kind of a debate there, but I, I agree, it must get, it's gotta get fixed, because I don't want the school not to be able to do what they're doing if it's against the zoning and someone decides to enforce. I also don't want political signs or other signs disappearing when we're just haplessly enforcing.
I know Constellation was upset because the, the fishing derby signs were put up, and they were removed, and they were just gone, I believe.
But then on the other side, we also don't want a bunch of signs just put everywhere for like roofing and logging.
True, but private, but private property, we can't control what goes on private property, and I know, like, when I was running for office, I asked permission on the corner of Albuquerque and Pinecrest, put sign there. That's, well, that's Albuquerque, but it's still private property if I get their ownership, and it was on there, probably not in the right of way, so we really, you know, we should probably, we should figure out how to address it, and maybe make it clear, or even have some wording to allow to temporarily do it.
Who, who enforces it, Kevin?
So, it is, it is Mr. Brown, the road agent, and I know from conversations with him that, and the building inspector, the concern is zoning ordinance are passed by the legislative body, meaning the residents, and there is no one by state law that can override the legislative body.
We gotta bring it back to the voters again. That's what I'm saying, I think we just gotta make it a priority, so we don't let it go another year.
We can absolutely get it ready to submit to planning board.
Okay.
Excellent. Yeah, I just, yeah, I'd like to give it a rest, you know, it's hampering the 4th of July parade, it's hampering the fishing derby. Any, any public, uh, town event is hampered by that, because that is, is one of the more, more traveled, uh, roads in the, in the county, in there in the city or town. But, yeah, I appreciate you guys looking into it.
I gotta inject one thing, you just said something, now you're, how come our signs on Albuquerque? We have a sign on Albuquerque.
It's a perm, the town sign?
Permit sign, so permit signs are allowed, right?
Well, I would assume that.
I don't think so.
I, to me, I thought it was said signs.
I thought it was all signs.
It is on town land, but.
But it's on the right of way of the town.
It's.
Which is specifically listed in the ordinance.
It's in the, it's in the right of way buffer, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
It's just all of a sudden it was being enforced, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
That's, she takes research, like I said.
I wasn't here.
I know, I think we, Albuquerque being one of the main drives, we need to figure out how to allow something that's right, right? And, and things that are not, we don't want popped up signs where temporary, I get that part of it, but things like activities in town should be. We gotta figure how to do that.
They come before the board and get approval.
Let's have to figure it out.
An approval process will be awesome, you know, non-business, non-political, you know, sign, you know, signs I think should be allowed, you know, at least on a temporary basis.
Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Anybody else for public input?
The only thing I would say to that is, you just wanna be careful to tell some groups they can and some groups they can't, because you'll probably face a legal challenge.
Correct, I would believe that's the case, too.
That's what's happening right now, yeah.
So, you just gotta come up with something.
Yeah, we gotta do something that's fair and make it sure it's clear, too. I think we found, we were looking at the ordinance and found the clause that said it, and it, it seems like it's just thrown there, it's like, why is that there? So, all right, we'll close public input at 7:49. All right, so did this. All right, we're gonna bounce all around, let's get these, yeah, let's get these folks out of here. We'll do the reappointment for Marion Colby and Gail Barringer up to the Heritage Commission. I believe we have a recommendation, yeah, we have a recommendation on the portal, right? And I think we have, the commission has recommended their reappointment, so we need a motion.
You wanna do it?
I'd love to do it, if you mind.
Yeah.
I make a motion to reappoint Marion Colby and Gail Barringer to the Heritage Commission for a term to expire on March 31st, 2028.
I second.
Motion made by Mrs. Queenen, seconded by Mrs. Plansky.
Plansky, Plansky.
I was gonna say Diane and, Diane and Kim, Diane and Kim, I don't hate the last names.
I don't care.
And, because I missed this one part, I just wanna make sure everybody knows, and at the March 20th meeting of the Heritage Commission, they polled their members, and the members agreed to, on the reappointments, so Ms. Colby and Barringer have expressed the willingness to serve, and they gratefully are being reappointed as recommended, so.
Thank you, ladies, for everything that you do for our town, appreciate you.
2028?
Yeah.
Oh, I know, wait, it's not counting, who's not counting?
All right, all those.
My friends.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you here that late. It wasn't 16 minutes, but at least it wasn't too long. And we'll just, why don't we get this other reappointment out of the way, too. So this is for the reappointment of Laura Gandia and Albert Gabo to the zoning board of adjustments. On the March 17th meeting, motion was made by John Deveraux and seconded by Albert, Albert Gabo. Motion to recommend for the board to second the reappointments of Laura Gandia and Al Gabo for the terms expiring in 2025. Motion was made, no discussion, the vote was 3-3-0-2, and it carried with Laura and Albert.
Only for one year?
No, no, so the motion is, so there is a motion.
2028, okay.
So we need a motion to reappoint.
Reading it wrong.
Yeah.
No, it says it in the motion.
Yeah, the motion's right, I was reading.
Yeah, terms were expired.
Steve's had a long day already, I think.
I have a technical question on that.
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you abstain from your own motion? First, would you make a motion for yourself, because there were five people there, but if he seconded the motion, can he abstain?
Can he abstain on the road?
I don't know. What do you think?
I don't think it matters.
I actually couldn't find the law on that. I actually could not.
I've, I've seen it in the board before, someone brought forward a motion and abstained from the vote, or brought forward a motion and deposited.
Majority wanted it, so the motion carried anyway.
Technically, the motion carried.
No, I, I, I bought them, that's not the issue, but again, I just wonder why there were five people there, but then he recommended himself.
They probably felt, they probably felt awkward, they probably felt awkward after making the motion to, to re, because.
Did Al second, I watched it, but I don't remember if Al was on.
I think Al did second it.
That's what it said in the minute.
Yeah, I'd have to re-watch it again, but I thought Al did second it.
Maybe he did, yeah.
If you make the motion, you should not abstain from the vote. If you make, I couldn't.
As policy.
Second.
Second.
As, as policy.
A second, a lot of times you could do it just for discussion.
Because that's like a discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a, so I'll make a motion to re, we reappoint, I'll make a motion to reappoint Laura Gandia and Albert, Al, we'll call it Al Gabo.
Gabo.
Gabo, to the zoning board for the, zoning board adjustments for the term to expire March 31st, 2028.
I'll second it.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Steve Gannon. Any further discussion?
Just thank you for your service.
Yeah, it's one of those boards that's hard to keep members, so.
Appreciate you guys.
Uh, Laura and Al have been on for a very, very long time.
Yes.
I've been retraded several times, and they've still been there, so. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. All right, so we got passed. And sorry for skipping around, but at least we got these things.
It's all right.
Hey, you're new to this.
Rusty, yes. All right, so we'll go back to the top. Approval of minutes from March 10th. Has anybody, has anybody had a chance to read and review any comments or changes, or?
Motion to accept.
A motion to accept from Mr. Leary, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gannon. No changes?
Yeah, always look at me. Was it last meeting that I, I had a vote that I could be on that POFA stage just listening to the conversation? Was that, that, that one, or the one before, I don't remember?
There was a one before.
Okay, good, because I didn't see it here, I was still gonna approve it, because, you know, it's really just a phone call, but, okay, no, I didn't see anything wrong with it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
4-0-1. Ruining my track record now, I already wrote that down. All right. Keep me honest, guys, did I keep everything on top here?
Yep, no, you're onto lease of town land.
All right, lease of town land for 296 Charles Bancroft Highway, map 15, lot 22, and I believe this is the farmland that we rent to McQuestion's, right?
All right, so I will make a motion to approve the lease of town land located at map 15, lot 22, to Charles and Nancy McQuestion for an annual lease payment of $925 plus applicable property taxes.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mr. Leary.
Further discussion? The applicable property taxes, how much are they?
$20, maybe it was something like that.
It comes up just, just under a thousand.
It's how it sort of was.
That's pretty new, right?
That is by law, yep.
Yep.
But it is new.
No, they, they.
Last year, last of the first year.
That's, that's pretty new, okay.
It keeps them at $1,000 with the.
Okay.
And it's still under current use, at current use rates.
I might have a million.
Yep, good question.
They've leased the land for a lot of years, they're good stewards of it.
Yes, they sure are.
Yep. Any, any other further discussion? Here are none of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. All right. All right, we have a con, approval for contract for municipal pest management for $28,665. Mrs. Quiner?
So our municipal pest management services is our annual mosquito contract. They have served the town very well, especially last year when, throughout the state, we had a number of high rates of incidents around. They keep us very well informed, I think I updated the board a number of times. They are always available also to come in. So it is in the budget, they've kept the cost steady for us, so we thank them for that. But it is time for the annual permitting, so this goes through the state, and the state has to issue the permit. So we approve the contract, they send the permit to the state, and we get started. This is same time every year. But I think the service that they provide is outstanding.
Yep.
Question, it says in the default budget, $29,355.
That just means that's what was in the.
Yeah, so we're less.
So we're less, which helps see how to offset other issues in the budget.
They'll spend it on.
Nicely done.
I will make a motion to approve the contract with municipal pest services for the 2025 mosquito control program in the amount of $28,665.
Motion by Mr. Gannon, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Plansky. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. All right, next up is treasurer delegation request for Terry Brien and Laura Mills. Mrs. Quiner?
So, the, per the town's investment policy, and I, I have to admit, I think I made an error last year, being new to this, and I think this was on your consent last year. This year, I thought it better to make a motion, but per the town's investment policy, the treasurer has to delegate her authority in order for the staff, and in this case, it's our town clerk and our deputy town clerk to go make the deposits into TD Bank. And so they do that daily, because also per policy, we can only have a certain amount of cash and checks here, so it's quite often, daily, they go, but that is authorized by the treasurer, that, that's delegated to them by her, and has to be approved by the board.
Now, can she also make the deposit? Is it one of three, or is it now it would only be Terry or Laura?
She could, but quite often, so are the treasurers, and on Tuesdays, so, and quite often, they make it at the end of the day, and that's.
But if she's here, she could also be one of them.
Yeah. She certainly can do any banking, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's request and authorize Terry Brien and Laura Mills to make bank and deposits for the town of Litchfield effective 4/1/2025 to 4/1/2026.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries 5-0-0. Uh, reappointment of Doug Nickel, fire warden, until replaced. I like that title, until replaced.
The town clerk and I had, like, different paperwork on this, and what the town clerk has is the legal record, so we said we'd bring it back to you and just have you reappoint him, because she has paperwork, has it expiring. Generally, we have the fire chief as the fire warden, that's pretty standard in most towns. So we're saying this time, why don't we do it until he's replaced as fire chief, and then we don't run into this expiration again.
Makes sense.
Which we don't have any, any intention of replacing him as fire chief, just, just, just because until sounds like imminent, and it is not, good job.
And I spoke to him.
We'll keep you, yeah.
Why don't we run it concurrent with his fire chief contract, which is five years, right?
Probably a better way to word it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
So, and every time we renew his fire con.
Just make it part of his contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we did that with the emergency management.
I think we did, yeah, make it part of the contract.
Sounds like you're gonna make a motion.
In addition to that.
I will make a motion to appoint Chief Doug Nickel as the fire warden concurrent with his current fire chief contract.
I second that.
So motion made by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Plansky. Any further discussion?
I just think that looks cleaner.
Can we get, can we add it as an addendum to his contract? Make it laid out there without changing the contract? Or just do it next time it expires?
Yeah, I, if we can.
Yeah, it's fine. Alright, any other discussion?
I have, I have a one question.
Sure.
Say he's not sick that day. A second in command can do this job.
He, doesn't he have a deputy ward?
Yes, but can they, do they have a deputy one?
Yes.
Okay, good, alright. We have a de- so I didn't know that. We have a deputy fire warden? Perfect, okay. That was my question.
Is it Kelly or is it?
I believe it's Mr. Glancy.
Glancy.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, that's true.
I was just afraid if you put it in his contract and then we have to, you know, give it to somebody else temporarily, if some, you know. Okay.
Well, as Ms. Kleiner said, don't do it now.
Put together.
Separate but together.
Exactly.
Alright, I'm sick, I, sounds like political talk right there.
Oh, it is, right?
Together.
Uh, Kim? No, she's there, Steve? No, Steve's off. So, I think Steve's way down here, it looks like. That's why, just missed a line. Alright, um, all those, no more discussion?
Over the place.
On this, on the, uh, Chief Nichols, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Alright, uh, let's see. Two PA thirty-eight forms intent to, um. Excavate, thank you.
So, there are two, um, these are. Map twenty, eighteen-one, eighteen-two, eighteen-three, these are continental paving.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a supplemental for twenty-four, twenty-five. Then there's a new one for twenty-five, twenty-six for map twenty-one, uh, lot eighteen. These are very standard. Um, and so, we're asking for the board's, um, approval because these are filed with the New Hamp- New Hampshire Department of Revenue and they have to remain on file until the amount of excavation comes through and there's determined if there's any, um, amount due. But, so these go from here to the New Hampshire DRA to be filed.
So where are these lots?
Um, down.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, these are ones he's, they're developing, okay. That's what I was curious, alright.
Yep.
By the store, or by Mills?
Across from Mills, right?
So, it must be twenty-one, eighteen must be behind it, that behind the yellow house, I'm guessing?
Could be.
The opposite?
Could be.
No, maybe you're right.
Yeah, 'cause I know those three were the, the sand pit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and they were there, um, and did not finish.
And you know, Mr. Chauvin always leaves the property looking better than when he found it.
That's for sure, yeah.
And I make a motion to approve the intent to excavate as presented for map twenty, lot eighteen, lot eighteen dash, or eighteen dash one, lot eighteen dash two, lot eighteen dash three, tax map twenty-one, lot eighteen.
I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by myself. Questions?
Yep.
Debate, discussion?
Yep.
Nope. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero. Diane, did you have a question, though?
She was just asking.
I did ask a question, um, if these are, um, the type of motions that would go through the planning board, why do they come to the selectmen as well?
Final approval.
It's final approval.
So, everything comes through us eventually?
Eventually, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You've made it to the top, kid.
The buck stops over there.
It's only downhill from here.
All over there.
Approve the subdivision, but I don't think they plan.
So, the planning board doesn't get intense to excavate.
They don't.
They don't get permits of that sort.
Okay.
Um, that, they file it here, um, you know, with Donna, um, or Karen, and then they come to the board and then they go to.
But it's all part of building, so it just confused.
Yeah, I think in the planning, when they talked about that project, they talked about excavating. It, so they, they, at that, at that point, they gotta come through this process to get it approved, but, yeah.
And then there's the fee.
Yeah, we.
It's always a fee.
Dirt's not free.
Yeah.
The money.
Yeah, dirt's not free.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll either get like excavate gravel or you'll get the timber. Um, so I think we just had a timber a couple, a little while ago. So, gravel, timber, anything that you're removing from the land.
Okay.
There's a, a tax for that.
Okay, thank you.
None of that live free or die stuff here.
Alright, next up is the abatement denial for twenty, uh, two, two forty-two B Dairy Road, map two, lot twenty-nine, sub T. Ms. Kleiner?
Um, so, this is not an abatement denial in the, um, final sense. So, we received, uh, an abatement request. Um, this is for a, um, cell tower. There was some questions, uh, from the assessors that you met, um, earlier as to they didn't have the current leases.
Okay.
Um, and there's a question as to the number of tenants that are on that tower, which directly impacts the value of the assessment. Um, so, the assessors have asked you, because we have to take some action upon it, to deny it now. They have sent a request for the new leases, um, to prove that there's, they say there's less tenants on the tower than what we've assessed. So, it's not a final, but it is a request for more information so the assessors can determine the valid assessment.
And it'll come back when we get the information request.
And they, and the assessors can evaluate it, yes.
So, what motion do we need to make at this point?
We need you to make a denial, um, of the application for the request of the current leases.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, for the abatement denial for two forty-two B Dairy Road, map two, lot twenty-nine, sub T, for the recommendation of our assessors' office, denial of the application or request of the current leases.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mrs. Queenen. Questions? Alright, any other debate, any other discussion? Here are none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries five zero zero. Alright, next up is the, uh, draft twenty twenty-five orientation manual and training resource. I assume this is gonna be our first read, kinda review.
It is.
Ms. Kleiner?
So, working with all of the department heads, um, there's a section in the orientation manual for each department that those sections were written specifically by the department heads for that department. Um, so they put together the information that they feel new members or new employees need to know about their department. Um, the rest of it is kind of put together. Um, we met, we talked about different things. Um, there's a lot of information here because we tried to reach out and find the trainings that were really important, one being ninety-one A. So, I think ninety-one A right-to-know law is the one that gets most municipalities in trouble. Um, it's also sometimes the hardest to understand, uh, because it has so many ins and outs of it. Um, so what we did was we made a drive, um, on our Google Drive. We put, uh, folders for the different boards, so there's the planning board folder that has a number of trainings specifically for the planning board, new members, current members, whomever. Then there's zoning, that has no training just on zoning. There's ninety-one A that has a number of trainings on the right-to-know. Um, and then there's policies, all the policies of the town that have been approved by the board are out there, including the purchasing policy, which pertains to all boards. Um, and then the, um, last one is bylaws. All the committee bylaws are, uh, out there in that. So, we've opened this up, we've made it accessible to everyone. And then there's the manual that kinda goes with that, um, that explains about agenda posting and meeting minutes and what's a quorum and, and all the town departments. So, thank you to all the department heads that worked really hard, um, and we've put this all together in a really short amount of time. If there's anything that anyone thinks that we've missed, um, there's one just for the Board of Selectmen, um, that has the Board of Selectmen training, the one that Mr. Gannon, uh, went to last year, local officials. Um, so, we tried to get as much as we possibly can. We did label it twenty twenty-five because all of those trainings are within the last year, right? Because information changes so quick. And what we thought we'd do is next year, create a twenty twenty-six, uh, folder and put all the trainings that have come out in twenty twenty-five so that you're constantly getting, you know, new and updated information as the laws change. Um, so we wanted to put the draft out here for the board, um, to review and approve. Um, if you think there's something we've missed, let us know, um, we'll certainly find it for you. Um, but we do think that, especially this time of year, when there's new members to all of the boards and commissions, that we just haven't supplied them anything and that's kind of not fair. Um, and so we do think it's important to get it out somewhat.
The only thing I would suggest is we move it someplace where we can make it public, so anybody that comes on. Just cause the way it's shared right now, they'll, they have to have that link, but it, it should be searchable.
There's no, there's nothing in there that.
No.
No, it's all very public information.
Yeah.
I think that would be awesome, cause then it'll also give the public a chance to look at and say, yeah, I could do that, I'd like to do that, or I have a better understanding.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, I, I, why not publish it on the website too? Just, just a link to it, you know, just have it directly, it goes right to the Google Drive. Let them read through it. I mean, it, it'll help, at least, it'll get some people some baselines about what we have to do and why we do things certain ways, because that's the law says we have to do it that way, so.
I got some important feedback.
Dinosaur QR code.
When we got the new website.
You really like that?
I love that, is that going on the website? Is that a default? Did you say the dinosaur was a default?
It, so giant.
QR code. That's the QR code for the link, right?
How'd you create it?
Page ten, is that on page ten, right?
Uncle did it.
Oh, then it would be done, yeah, it would be, it would be good. You, you could probably change it, but yes, yeah.
Cause the other, the other one has our flag on it.
So, Selectmen Brinal knows how to change them, I'm not that.
But it might not be the image you want.
I thought, I thought you wanted a dinosaur, I wasn't gonna ask.
I don't mind the dinosaur. So, that's, you are coding about it.
There might be some bone somewhere.
Yeah.
But I did receive some feedback from a, a board member, um, of another commission who said that when we got the website, we put out that agenda posting.
Mm-hmm.
Policy, and they lost it, cause it got lost in their email, right? Like, we all get so many emails, it's so buried, it's gone. So, at least if we have all that stuff in one section, if they forget, they can go back and look towards it. And I thought that was a really good suggestion.
And I think with this too, it'd be nice, something you and I talked about is, um, like the, the use of the tractor for the conservation and recreation. Where we'll come up with some training videos that we want them to watch, um, and then, you know, whatever approvals they have to have. Copy of the license, if they're driving across the road, they're gonna have to have a license, et cetera. And that could go into the manual as well. And they could have the one-stop shop for all of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think the more information we share, the smarter we all are, right?
Show up before they sign up, right?
Yeah, I think the challenge we have with documents is we have internal documents and we have public consumption documents. And sometimes we treat, like, our commission, the, the process doing an agenda posting, that's an internal document, but we gotta put it somewhere where they can find it too. And so, I, I, I think you can, we can create this as a public link and it can have a reference and people can go there and it, there's nothing in there that's gonna cause any problems for us, so.
Someone wants to look it over and let me know next meeting?
Yeah, it's, we'll get it sent next meeting, we'll, we're ready to even discuss it, but we probably should be able to, two weeks should be a good window of time. I'm sure we have a couple of other things that may be missing, maybe, maybe, cause it's pretty gets done, so. Alright, moving on, um, the next one is the twenty twenty-five Town of Litchfield Strategic Plan. Mrs. Kleiner?
So, I did, we don't normally do that.
Department heads.
Um, but I did print it, um, for each of you because this is something I think that you probably wanna go through and make notes and, and changes and things that you wanna see. Uh, again, this was a work of the entire, um, team.
Something we requested to be done as a board.
So, um, I think we talked about this, um, at the beginning of the year and having a plan, like, having a purposeful plan on where we're going and what we're doing. Um, and, you know, I have to say, the town department heads and their staff worked very, very hard. My hat off to our town clerk who, you know, during all this had elections and everything else, and she still worked diligently hard to get hers done. Um, I think we all learned a lot about where we thought we should go and what we thought we should do and, um, we tried to a- address a number of things. One of the, um, ideas that came, or a couple of the ideas that came out of it, um, related to the high level, so where it says administration, um, we're talking about the plans that you don't see specifically out there as departments. Administration, they were talking about, um, the town administrator, the administrative assistant to the board, Donna. Finance and the building department. We are kind of the, the administrative group and then all the other departments have their own, um, plans. And when we looked at, um, a couple of the visions, there were some ideas for a meet programs that we wanted to put out to you. Um, and so that's in the memo that's drafted to you, that's also on your portal. Um, we felt, all felt very strongly about creating this community bond um, with our residents and making sure that they feel a part of this process. Um, and so, we had a couple of ideas and, um, maybe you like one, maybe you like none. Um, but one was spend the day. Um, a program where residents can spend the day shadowing one of our departments. So, be a highway worker for a day, not that you really have to work, but shadow them. Um, it would require a waiver of liability, unfortunately. Um, and we asked that only one resident with one department, um, because more than that would be difficult. And then at the end, we'd ask for their feedback. What do you think we need to do differently? What did you like? What did you didn't like? Um, so that was one idea, called spend the day. And then the other was a community project. Um, where residents propose projects that benefit the community for a dollar amount set by the board. And for an example, ten thousand dollars. The top five projects are chosen by the board. If you've got more than that, and you didn't, uh, those proposals are posted to Facebook. Members are allowed, the people that propose the project are allowed to come to the board, tell the board all the specifics of their project, and then the community gets to vote to stop projects.
You're talking voters during voting season or?
Talking on Facebook, actual Facebook poll vote. And anybody can vote, anybody can participate, you know, I mean, then you don't even have to be eighteen to vote on Facebook. You can be fourteen.
You can be ten, you can be nine.
And, you know, there's, eh, from there, you get the winner, and that goes to town board.
What if the residents are not residents on that?
No, the people that propose the projects have to be residents and the projects have to bene- be beneficial to all the residents of the town.
But what if a.
What if they're voting and they're not residents?
That, Facebook. Facebook, hopefully they are, you know, that's the only thing.
You can't.
I know you can't.
Can't really do anything to prevent that.
Every survey I've done.
You know, we would assist that anyone interested in determining the real cost, right? If it, um, and the feasibility, because sometimes you come up with some pretty crazy things. And by the way, we're not the first town to do this. There are many towns that do this. Um, and we'd assist them with any legal or statutory or, you know, um, requirements. And, but then the thing is, it gets, it's voted on, it gets put on the town warrant, so the town's still vote officially voting on it. And have it funded by unassigned. So it takes the financial piece out of it, right? But it's not hurting the budget, it's not. But it's an idea of getting ideas directly from our residents on projects they would like to see. And we think that's important. So that was the second idea we had. Uh, uh-oh.
Well, it just reminds us of a project that we did.
Oh.
A couple of, yeah.
A couple of projects we did a couple of years ago.
And, and so we put a couple of things out there, you know, it, it has to be townland. It has to be something that's completed when they, in a year, because they don't want it to drag on for ten years. Uh, it has to be a one-time expense. It can't be something that is reoccurring, things like that. Like, it was just two ideas that, you know, as a leadership, we came up.
I love that. I mean, I'm all for when we bring the community in to, to do projects that the whole community benefits from. Most of the time when we do that, they're funded by the group coming forward with them. Um, we have a problem with the verbiage of unassigned fund balance.
Yes, that's a scary word.
So that's, you know, that's kind of a dirty word in our, in our community right now, where there's a misunderstanding. Of how, why money ends up in the mid, the unapplied, unassigned fund balance and how money comes out of it. And whether or not it can be paid down on the tax rate. There's some confusion there that we need to address, I think, as a board. But as far as the projects going and getting people involved in it, it, it's what started me and community organization here was the river access. I think it starts people getting their feet wet, um, in the community and finding what that reward is when you meet new people from other boards and things like that. It's, it's, I think it's a great idea.
That's what sucked me in too.
Yeah, you got me too. Yep. Yep.
I wonder if people think about a, a zip line across the Budland.
Is there gonna be Bud, is there, is it current the other end?
To go over from Bob's house right across the river.
Only by invitation.
But if, if you saw items in the strategic plan, I mean, the department heads worked really hard on this.
We're gonna get time with this, right?
And so we just went, give it to you so you can mark it up. Mark it up.
I think, I was part of this also, doing my portion of it, but I think that, um, looking at the department heads, the swath, you know, the, what they've talked about. Should help drive some of our kind of focus areas going forward, right? Because these are the folks that are in the trenches, they're doing the work every day with the public and everything else. We come here twice a month and sit in this meeting and talk, right? Um, but we do need to set forth a vision for this town and a vision for this town hall and the services we do. I think there's a lot of good information, um, from the different department heads and where they sit and their kind of, their fight them of responsibility that we may not be visible to. There's some real threats here, there's some real concerns. How can we change that dialogue? And I think your compliment about, you know, unassigned, the unassigned fund balance should not be a dirty word. It's supposed to be a good word. We, we've done well and we have this ability to offset, and that's what we do it for. But I think people have conveyed it to be something bad and it's not really something bad.
They just don't understand what you're talking about, what you're talking about it.
Yeah, so I think.
Inability to pay down the tax rate with it.
So I think education has to be key to what we're doing going forward and we gotta figure out how to get those words out. So I think there's gonna be more topics as we go through this and kind of align our thoughts. Is there, there's no action for us to take at the moment. We need to review it, maybe next meeting, maybe come back or, or maybe not next meeting, but the meeting after, come back with some feedback. Or maybe some drill in to how we can umbrella it?
Right, I mean, I think, I think because the department heads put so much into this, this has been like four months of. Um, intense work on this. Uh, I think we kinda should give, you should give them some direction as to, yes, this is acceptable. Um, but certainly it's not.
I mean.
Tonight or next week, whatever.
I mean, I think at a glance, it's except, they're, they're telling us what they're feeling and, and I look at a lot of these, the weaknesses and concerns and threats and they, a lot of them line up to the same.
Yes.
They say it in different words, but it's the same issue, right? It's support, it's funding, it's investments and those kind of things that we kind of have to figure out. What's the right story going forward?
And we all did it independently. So we all did it independently without talking. Then we came together, because we have a monthly leadership meeting and we came forward. And I found the same thing that, uh, the selectman Brunel said. I went, wow, these are a lot alike. So that's important.
Okay.
I look forward to seeing in their words too. That'll be an education for me, because I'm out here all the time to see what's going on.
Yep.
Appreciate, I appreciate their work.
The only concern I would have is if you haven't, if you have children voting. I mean, that could skew the vote.
It depends what the projects are.
Yeah, and then, you know, you get someone that wants, gets, wants it so badly that they get all their kids in their, in the groups or whatever to vote for it. It might not be the true reflection of the, the taxpayers.
If we do a Google vote.
Yeah, we can, you can lock it down.
Then you can lock it down.
You can lock it down, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you could also make them attest that they are resident and sign it, and then we can validate it that way, give us their address and go against the register. We can make it harder if we want, right?
Yeah, we should probably do eighteen years of age and older.
Yeah.
If you're registered, vote your fingerprint.
Yeah.
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 I mean, I, I, I think, you know, I, I think there've been, I think the idea of going out to the public and asking for projects that would, that bring the community together. There's a lot of good things that happen out of that.
Yeah.
I think we've had a lot of groups do that and come forward with projects they were self-funding, which I think you mentioned, I mean, some of that stuff was all self-funded.
Mostly the time they are.
Right, but, and they, they came forward because they got huge support from the community, whether it's donations on private, to kind of do something that benefited the town. So I think this spurs that on more, right, and maybe.
I love that.
Yeah, and I think i- if we're one, if the board is sponsoring it, we're kind of saying to the community, we, we want to do things that are bringing the community together. We want to be able to get to know people too, so us five plus one don't always have the right ideas neither, right? So, it's good. Okay. All right, next up is the twenty twenty-five election results, the default budget.
So, um, after, um, quickly, after the town election, um, we looked at the town budget. And so we created this file, which has, for every department, it has the default and the, um. Regular budget. And, I'm gonna scroll down here so that people can see it. Um, and it's on your portal, so certainly residents, um, can access it and look at it. But the important note to us was this page, um, which is kind of a summary. And what we're looking at is how do we, um. Make the default budget and live by the default budget. We're, we're very thankful to the voters. Um, and I think that we can. So at the end of the day, working with the department heads on what we can, you know, kind of live without. What we can, what absolutely is necessary, either it's a legal requirement or it was a contract. Um, at the end of the day, we're probably about sixty thousand dollars short on the default budget. Um, which means we have to find something in the default budget, which we don't do. Right, and so in order to meet those, those contracts and those other things. Um, in the course of this, I got a communication from Penachuk.
Oh, boy.
Our fire hydrants, because that just, is everyone happy?
Lovely. How much are they going up?
Oh, yeah. Um, so the fire hydrants, even more than what we already reported to the budget committee. As a result of the merger.
Mm-hmm.
Um, went up an additional twelve thousand dollars.
So seventy-two we're at, right?
Yeah, so we were, so we were really upset with the fact that now receiving default. Um, that sets us back to the twenty-four rate and it went up from there. Um, so that's a significant, uh, shortage that is part of that, um. Sixty thousand that we're, that we're gonna need.
And what's, what is new fire?
Um, so thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Higher?
Higher than twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a municipal clause? We're gonna sell it and we can't pay it, go away?
I wish.
Does, I'm just, what, what are they gonna do, turn the water off?
They did send.
Or just start opening the hydrants up?
For twelve thousand dollars, we got a perfectly, um. Laid out plan on where all our hydrants are in the year they were installed.
Yeah.
It only cost you twelve thousand dollars.
Well, I think.
All of them. They're, I've, I've, I've wondered, um, where they were and so.
They, they know where they all are, that they're, they're all assigned to them.
So does that mean that next year's fire hydrants is gonna be four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars?
Probably. Good estimate, or guesstimate.
Yeah, four sixty-nine.
It's four sixty-nine now.
So I, I know we all belabor this hydrant thing and I get it.
Four eighty-nine, seventy.
But at the end of the day, it is a service to the community and we have to pay it, right?
Yeah.
I, I, it's hard, I get it. The water's too expensive and when we do comparisons between Manchester, where we pay for that plug up there and all the other plugs we have in town. It's, it's highway robbery.
So this is another thing that we would, would take over.
Correct, that's one of the, it's a driver, right? It's one of the drivers.
Yes.
It, it's definitely motivation to have a, a town water.
We definitely do it cheaper, or at least that's anticipated to be.
Yeah.
Yep.
So looking at your spreadsheet, Kim, um, twenty twenty-five green is what we had for the twenty-five budget.
No, green is, green is the default.
Blue is, blue is what we're planning on and then delta is the yellow.
Well, think of it this way.
Yes, so.
Just one, one second. That's the budget committees approved, not what we asked for. Remember, we've been cut from there, so that's what the voters saw and looked at, so.
So, um, here's the board of selectmen, for an example. And there, there's the default.
Yeah.
Um, and then the operating budget. I was.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
This is new, this column, because I was, just started going out and putting what's been expended to date. Because as I'm doing a review of where we are, so I'm not quite done all the departments, but. So we did the default versus the operating, then we looked at what was contractual.
Yeah.
Right, and, and what needed to be funded. And that is what's in the box.
Okay.
Um, on the bottom. And then we took all those needed. See the box at the bottom?
Yeah, not all of them have boxes.
Oh, some of them don't. So if there wasn't anything that really needed to be funded or that was short, that couldn't be made up within that department.
I think so.
There might not be a box on that one.
It was the first thing that I touched.
Some people get a box. Why doesn't everybody get a box?
Because some people, so like town meeting, for example, town meeting, the default is higher than the operating.
Because they only have the one, only have the one election.
Right, so they help us.
Yeah.
And police and health insurance, we had, the health insurance in the default was higher. Because we had a number of open positions that we had.
Yeah.
You know, estimated what those people would choose for health benefits. Um, so the actuals came in lower, so the default in that case is higher. Um, so that hel- helps to offset some of the contractual needs where the default wasn't high enough. Um, I think the main ones, um, were the increases that the staff already received in twenty twenty-four. Um, I, I, I think you wanna fund those and, and not take money away from staff. Um, and then there were contracts, so there's a co- my contract, the chief police contract, the fire chief's contract, the captain's contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the website. Um, and Mr. Sanzuzi, who you met earlier, um, because that contract was done during the year. When we found out that we needed a utility operator. So the board was forced to do that. So those things weren't in the default, but we found where we can offset those costs. And that's by having the police hold one open position. So, um, I have spoken to the police chief. Um, he's not necessarily concerned. Of course, we're concerned if we can't have the position eventually. But for one year especially, now we're heading into April, he has two open positions. Um, one is a regular officer, one is an officer with sixty percent R S R O.
Right.
Um, he'd like to continue to look for that and not fill the regular officer. That money with the associated benefits that would go with it would offset the amount that is needed to make default work.
I, I think from talking to the chief or actually having a conversation during elections too, is that he's had candidates, but they've fallen through. They've gone to certain levels, so he doesn't have any viable candidates at this point. His priority is the S R O, because they'll help in the school and the school needs a lot of help. Right, correct, well, yeah, he's gotta build, keep the culture the way it is and the people he wants to help.
Things looking good over there.
Yeah, and I don't think he wants to change that, so the likelihood of him finding one to get through the system and get actually become on the pay, on the payroll. Is probably fall at the best, potentially, I would think. So, and I think at that point, we can reevaluate whether we can move forward or not, but as long as he hasn't hired that, that one or two. That's, that's funding that's available for us to offset. We're not removing his position, that's the clear message. We're not removing the position. We're just gonna allow that bottom line to help other bottom lines, right, to get, make sure we can keep services at the levels we want, that we're being. We wanna keep services at the level they're at without reducing them, right? We're not trying to.
I'd rather him be able to use that money and buy a cruiser.
But we can't.
I know, I know.
Right, we'll get the one, the one apple, because that's the only one that was approved. Um, you know, if both, if both got approved and that we were still in default, I would say we probably could, but at this point, I don't know. At this point, we got one, so we gotta deal with it.
You need to dig up money to get the other one fixed.
Well, that's gonna be the other problem too, so whatever we don't take, he's gonna be eating it up in his expense. I, I was just doing, helping him do a report and the dollars keep on going up every day.
Yeah, that was the first thing.
Three cruisers sit aside, and now he's also at that point where he has to take a secondary car and make it operational ready, because he cannot rely on the frontline cars we have today. So we're making investments.
That was the first thing I did, and I know I ran into you there, was when, um, I got elected and I looked at what happened to the budget and what happened to the cruisers and everything. As I made an appointment with Dana, went in and sat with them and kind of looked at the ages of the cruisers and how many days, um, a year they're in getting fixed. Yeah, um, and also to just to kind of take the, the temperature of the police station to make sure that the police weren't taking it personally. That it was not, it was not a vote against the police, it was a vote against spending money, which is, doesn't, and he had already done, you know, conversations with the police and everything, so that made me feel. Doesn't, and he had already done, you know, conversations with the police and everything, so that made me feel a little bit.
I, I think the rank and file understand the voter's decision and they create, they understand that they may not like it in some sense, because they see a need.
Yeah.
But they're going to continue doing their job and serving the community the way they can.
Yeah.
And, and not to bring up what's on social media, but some of the commentary that was out there about. Them doing their jobs and stopping speeders and now we're at this retribution that is completely bullshit.
That was upsetting to me, where we had had a, a bad accident in town like the day before.
I think we had three in two weeks.
We've had some bad accidents and we've had a lot of people complaining that they aren't stopping enough people and then they get out there and they do their job and. Somebody goes right after them and I was horrified for them, I think we need to remind our police officers. Um, as citizens, how much we do appreciate them and how we do need them desperately.
And I, it, it's probably also important to note, they can't be everywhere all the time, I mean, they, there are. So many officers that cruise that patrol the town and they can't be in every spot and, cause I think I heard, well, they're on Albuquerque stopping traffic today, but why weren't they on color? Cause that's where all the speeders are now, they can't be everywhere, that's the unfortunate part.
Well, not when we have two cars that are operable.
I will say, even though it's been tough, but I think they've always been able to do their patrols, it's just getting tougher and tougher and.
Yep.
You know, one of the big side effects is we do not want these cars the way they are, because they're unreliable and they can't start, because they gotta go. It could cause a delay and that's, you know, concern, and someone becoming a safety, a safety issue too, so. Um, he's got his one car. It'll take three months to get fitted up, put into service, in the meantime, he's repairing the other ones and that's gonna hurt our bottom line overall too. So he's gotta kinda watch that, we can't stop him, we, we, we should not be telling him to not repair them, cause he has to repair them.
Has to, absolutely has to, we have to.
I, i- in some cases, it's, it's, it's foolish investment, but we have to do what we gotta do.
Well, they're not necessary until something bad happens in town and all of a sudden we don't have police cars that will start.
Then listen to the people, bitch.
We are, we are investigating other options. Um, I just think that other options ha- have good points and bad points. Um, and sometimes, like when you talk about municipal leases, you're talking about they want a large fleet.
Mm-hmm.
And a certain number of vehicles and that's gonna be a little bit more challenging for a town our size. To come up with the number of vehicles that they are going to need to make the program work.
That would still have to be voted on by the voters, right?
Yeah.
Doing the leases, yeah, okay. Wouldn't wanna, you'd want it to be your default budget.
I don't wanna spend it down without it being approved by the voters.
Right, but it just may be more challenging even to do it, because I'm not sure that. You know, it's, it's gonna be something that the board really needs to look at, um, once we get very detailed information.
Would, would we consider, I mean, one thought, especially if the make a lease makes sense. You're looking at probably all the cruisers, backline, administrative cars, our administrative cars. Things that are not specialties in some respects, I mean, how would you get that number to be large enough?
They would want like highway vehicles, they'd want fire vehicles. I, eh, eh, yeah, it, things that the town of Litchfield doesn't normally replace.
Right.
Every five years and so we, we really wanna weigh the cost of that versus the benefit. Uh, but we are, we're meeting, they're doing, um, their data crunch, we're doing our data crunch and. Yeah, we've got time, which is good.
And lots of good brains on it that will figure out what we need to do.
Right, and.
There's always a new idea that we haven't explored.
Right.
Yep.
So based on the department meetings, y- you think you have a plan? Just si- we can make the sixty thousand up somewhere in some respects.
So we think having the police department um not fund that one position, we'll save the benefits. And which will give us, it'll give us about a hundred and twenty, that gives us some buffer for things that might come up. Whether it be the police car repairs, whether it be an emergency, you know, I, who knows, Culver goes, whatever. Um, and so we wanna weigh that, we wanna give ourselves some cushion. Um, you know, I think we did all meet as department heads and, and we talked. We fully understand the difficult time. The economy, inflation, the revaluation, everyone's concerned. Um, I think every department head understood that, uh, we wanna make this work. Um, and we wanna make sure that in no way are the services to our residents impacted.
Yeah, and I, I think I wanna clarify something too, so for folks who are listening and the police department may be listening. We're saying to Chief Jones, continue to recruit, if he gets his, if he finds two candidates, bring them forward, let's figure it out. But it sounds like he's going, his focus right now is on the SRO position, which is a very unique one, he's got a, like I said, he's had some. But the point being is we're not removing the two positions, we're not removing the funding. We're going to continue running our budget the way we always run it. I, I would advocate we, that on the, our reporting, we just, we, we apply that the, uh, the budget committees approve budget appropriations. As a way to track. And let the lines line up and where we overrun, we overrun and we can have, we can explain to the budget committee why we overran it and things like that. Um, cause I think like one example is fuel, they reduce fuel, we're running way too hot in fuel. Right, they need to understand that this is what our run rate is and these are the factors and that's there, as long as we're managing to the bottom line of our budget, which is what we're. Legally gotta do, and our department heads help us, we'd be, we'll be fine, but I think it's important to get the. The real picture as we go through the budget.
So I was thinking that it's probably a good idea if I send the link to this file to. Um, John Davidson.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for the budget committee, so they can look at this. The question is, what do we want our finance people to put in the budget reports? I think it's better if we put the default.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna look like we're overrunning a lot of different line items.
Mm-hmm.
But as long as we can see that bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
And we know we're good on the bottom line, I think if we put anything else, then we're.
Be alive.
Sight of where we should be.
That's how companies operate, they show, they show that, you know, if you're, have all this money budgeted in this area and you overrun it. Then, you know, and we used to have to give an explanation of why we were off, if we were off more than two or three percent. Of each line item and, and for this one, it would be, we're running at the default budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that would be kind of a, a pat answer, as long as it's true, you know, I mean, I guess you do twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, you could do a comparison. You know, if, if we're staying within the twenty-five.
Well.
So.
The reason why I suggested the other way was because it's been traditional where the board, and I lived through three defaults, so.
Yeah.
The board actually revebbled the budget and changed all the numbers. The board went in and actually said, this department only needs the five bucks, they're only get five bucks, right, versus what the default offered them. So all I'm saying is, I say the, the closest operating budget we have is the budget committees approved budget that failed the voters. That's what our metric is, that's why I was suggesting it, but. Even if you don't do, cause I think there were items in the, in the budget committee's budget that we didn't agree with, but that's what they approved and that's what went in front of the voters. I mean, the voters didn't, the voters didn't defeat the budget because they just, cause they thought it was too low, they defeated it because it was too high. And we have areas in our budget that the way to operate services to the level that we're at right now and what's been pre-approved by the budget, by the voters. That's the number we're asking for, we're not going for anything more, I mean, this town runs on a very lean, lean budget. But I, I'm okay with whatever departments, whatever the, the county, whatever finance wants to do from a tracking perspective. I mean, I, if like every other department head, I'm sure it has their own tracking sheet that tracks their budget and they understand where their numbers are, but. I just thought it'd be more helpful for the budget committee to actually see the actual run rate based on their approved budget.
Could, could you do like a, a twenty twenty-four, the, the default budget, could you do that and what's spent? Versus what you, I mean, could you do like actually add a year and, and a variable for that year? So you've got, you've got the default, what we proposed, what we have and the, and the variance from each of those, isn't that kinda what you're saying?
So we could on the spreadsheet that we've already created. Where we have the default, we have the operating and.
Good tool.
And I've, I've started adding that last column of what's been spent.
It's manual though, that's the only problem.
It is, it doesn't take that much time, um, the other thing is Heather does a fantastic. Um, sheet every quarter, which she sends to the budget committee on. Kind of the run rate, so looking at what we had in the previous year. What we've been budgeted this year and what we've actually spent, and she does it every quarter. So you can kinda see it, we could put the operating in that, I, I don't know, I don't wanna get people confused.
Well, I think, actually, i- if, if, if it's not an issue to have Heather do it manually by quarter or by, or by month, when she does. Generates a report and add that to the column, here's what was, here, here's the fault, here's what's actually spent, this is what the, that, that makes sense to me that.
And what we actually budgeted, so that we can see how close we are to the numbers and where we absolutely had to have that money and had to pull from other places. Cause we can tell why, you know, but if we redo those numbers and we don't see, like, like say you budgeted ten thousand dollars, well. In our heads, we know, okay, we're gonna take that down to five.
Yep.
But, but we really spend seven, i- it, it gives you a, a good number to go back to budget with saying, okay. We have operated with this, but we still had to go past it and here's why, and now we have a justification that really makes sense.
And I think the other probably most important part is the department heads, when they submit their request for payments. They charge us the right line, they don't charge it to a line that has money in it, they charge it to the line, if it's. If it's a data line, charge it to data line, if it's a purchase, it's a purchase, if it's a uniform.
Don't treat it as a bottom line at this point.
Correct, yeah, cause at the end of the day, it's, it is a bottom line on their budget too and, um, it's gonna be important. Cause it'll actually will help us at the next budget cycle too, to go, alright, where do we really offshoot, right, cause we've had.
Absolutely.
Cause every time we do our budget, within three months of us getting the budget to, passed us, there's increases that come and this may give us a little more insight to where the increases are going.
And the more years information that you get like that.
Yeah.
Then the more helpful it will be, because it'll be like, well, you've told us three years in a row to cut this and we've tried each year. But this happened this year, this happened this year, this happened this year, and all of a sudden, you've got more tools to, to talk and to present in, information to.
Okay. Can you track that and what's the standard, what is standard accounting practices, what do they do?
So the state, um.
Oh, sorry, I just. So sta- I just wanna make sure if we're reporting something, it's standard practices, what we do internally to track the deltas.
So this is the.
I don't need that, it broke off.
The dirty details are when I go into the portal and I report to the DRA. I had to report the default, cause that's what was voted in and they have, you know, the. The top numbers, so by department, right, by key line items, not the total detail of every line item. Um, they will take that, then the auditors will come in at the end of the year. And they will report on what was actually spent.
Mm-hmm.
And they file, um, what's called the MS five thirty-five, which is any variances between the two. So the auditors will true it up to what the DRA has. I think it's gonna be easier for the auditors to true it up if we are using the default in our financial software. Because then they can take the, the variances that's actually there, right, and see it. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, I spoke with Karen, um. And we kind of agreed that that was what we recommend, um.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure, what was the delta stuff you guys are talking about, you're trying to track other things or just try to just keep it internally?
Actually budgeted as well.
So it's all for us internally, but it's not what's actually being. And they'll have the default budget and the auditors will figure out, they should come up with the same number we do.
Yes, so the auditors will have to true up.
That's what I wanted to make sense, it wasn't three versions of the spreadsheet going around with.
Yeah, I was trying to avoid.
One.
Quasi number, maybe, close.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we pass the, but that was my next question, that we're standard practices.
But we did find, eh, as, um, selectman Bernal said, in past default years. Where they moved a bunch of money around and we just found that made it a little bit harder.
Yeah.
When you moved it to your next budget.
Oh, I told you to keep school for you.
Oh, did you? Oh, it keeps school.
We think you're better off.
I agree. That's what I agree, okay. I just didn't want three spreadsheets going around.
So it seems like you're all in agreement.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I only reflect it because we have a official report that goes out, that has nothing to do with DRA. We report DRA separately altogether, it's our internal system, but if, if Heather can do it in the spreadsheet, I'm fine with it too. Like, like I said, I think every department keeps their own budget in a spreadsheet anyway, because there's a ledger that I know where everything goes, right, so.
But I think what you said about making sure everything's coded correctly.
Yeah, that has to happen.
Budget lines is gonna be really important this year.
Yeah, some lines are gonna be padded and this is gonna expose those lines and.
In, in some cases, they will be, but let's not also, also remember too, our department heads are very frugal and they know we're in a budget crunch. They may defer something they asked for this year and we just need to make sure that we understand that, right, to.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, we tried hard to get this budget.
Oh, I know.
And we're going down to hundreds of dollars in certain accounts, so that's.
Yeah.
And there was only a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars between the.
Two budgets.
The two budgets and so, you know, we realized that.
That you already du- had done a pretty good job, there's only a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars more.
I, I believe we were at like what, four hundred, first round with the budget committee, we were up around four hundred and chopped it down to one twenty-seven.
Yes, the budget committee had their work. And, uh, you know, so, but we also know that we're up for significant challenges in twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. Like I said, after the budget was approved, it started continuing to increase. Yeah, so you'll get to experience it this year, it's fun.
Oh, yeah.
You guys, I got elected and then I saw the results and I was like.
Well, hold on.
Wait, 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 no, no, I can do it.
Press my name up.
I'ma show, I'ma show up.
Erase, erase, erase. Alright, so let's, um.
I, I really am.
So nothing else, I mean, there's no action for us to take, just more informational and.
No, we will go ahead and have finance put it in the default, we'll have Heather work on the spreadsheet and. If we, if you need more information from there, we'll get you more information.
Yeah, thank you for the chief for taking over for the team again.
Yeah, really.
He's not taking anything with the team, he's just allowing, he's gonna delay, delay, delay and help us out.
It's a delay, and it's always.
His positions are not going anywhere, so.
Yeah, I agree, I do.
Um, alright, so we have to go back to, um, the com- the commission liaisons and board the commissions, so. So I appreciate you guys entertaining me to wait till the end, but, um, so. Any, anybody have your preferences of boards and commissions that would like to participate in? Uh, well, we'll, welcome the new member first, which one would you like to participate in?
Well, I obviously like conservation, but I'd also like heritage, um, if I can take two.
Yeah, I, I think I agree, I gave some thought, we're gonna try to balance the load of what we've all been doing.
Oh, my god, yeah.
Heritage and the conservation is a fairly light lift when you think about it and they meet once, don't take it the wrong way. They meet once a, once a month, but.
Right.
Um, the heritage, uh, the conservation is firing on all cylinders, the heritage is a very well organized group. Um, s- so there's not a lot of fluff, there's not a lot of delay, and I think.
For my first year, I think it's probably good boards for me to be on.
And, and you're familiar with a lot of it too, so.
Right, right.
Okay. Any, uh, any other folks would wish to, uh, participate in another commission or board?
Yeah.
You said you had your hand up, what would you like?
I like, well, again, I didn't, I don't know if we were gonna do, could you, um, repeat more years than you were already on?
I, I personally don't have a problem with it, but I know our bylaws have something that says. Um, trying to, I don't, the bylaws have a restriction on the.
Just chair and vice chairman.
Yeah, chair and vice chair, that's why I had brought up that we should also put it on to the committees and the commissions. We should.
We'll keep.
Run it right across.
Kim, what committee would you like?
Well, it depends on the outcome of that answer, so I didn't know if we were talking about that tonight, that's why I said it's a prerequisite before we get aside.
There, we'll see, I mean, it might.
Well, I wanted heritage, but I, that's okay. Nope, 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 nope.
Are you sure?
But if we don't, if we can repeat, I like the ones, I'm, I have to do NRPC, I'm there till twenty twenty-seven. I'm the chairman, I can't be on the planning board, cause I'm Jay's boss technically, he answers to me, so I can't do planning board.
Yep.
Um, economic development. Economic development, I think we're trying to get that closed and have a lineup next week. We have somebody coming in on, on the video, right?
It's actually this week, isn't it?
Yeah, this week.
Wednesday.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, sorry. Uh, I think I should drive it home, but if anybody would like that, it's wonderful.
Be your last meeting, right? You're gonna close it?
Oh, no, 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 we've already, we have a template starting to write the report, but we have a third party coming in just for analysis also, and then we'll wrap it up.
How are we paying for the third party?
I don't know, how are we paying for that?
This one, this, this is free.
Pitch.
Cause this is a.
Pitch?
Pitch.
Yeah. But I wanna hear it, yeah. I do think they sent a recommendation of purchases in the area. I think we have to be careful. But I'd at least wanna have that last piece that we looked, and maybe there's something good. I don't know. Remember, open mind, right? All right, so anyway, I'd like SIP, and I like, um, economic development, but that's what I'm on at the moment. Well, I, well, again, I don't know if anybody else wants SIP. To me, I actually kind of find it's financial, NRPC is always financial with the region. Economic development's financial.
Fantastic job, and if you wanna continue, I think, I've had it. I think it's a.
I just don't know if you want budget.
Oh, no, no budget for me. No planning. No, I've had enough of that.
That's gonna be a big one, isn't it?
No, no planning, and I think Bob would be great on the recreation commission. I would take that. And I think out of all of them, that's probably the most rewarding, because you get to witness the little kids running around and having fun. What are you, what are you looking at me like?
You guys do a lot of work there.
Could, can I have?
He's not you guys anymore. He's one of us guys.
But I'll, I'll, I'll do planning again. I didn't have a problem with planning. I was just starting to come up to speed. I, I would have done planning or rec, rec, either one, but, um, I think Bob would be great on the rec. I think you'd get a lot out of it as well.
John wants budget.
What's that leave?
Or as I like to refer to it, the extension of the school board. There's five members of that board that have direct ties to Litchfield School District, as current or former school board members, spouses of mem- of, uh, employees and people that do business in the district. There's five people.
Seven?
There's nine.
Nine, wow.
So, we got left.
So, you're getting, you're doing economic development and SIP, right?
And NRPC, and of course, that one, once a month call for P O F A.
You're, you're doing SIP and economic?
Yeah, economic development, SIP, NRPC.
If there's no objection, I'll continue doing emergency management.
Like nine, ten months.
Emergency management. If there's no objection.
Which, what did you say?
Emergency management.
Well, I think you're great at that.
Yeah.
School and facilities improvement.
So, can I ask a question about the school facility improvement? Is that an official board appointment or is that a resident person? And I, cause I originally thought you joined as a resident, not as a representative of the board. And I don't know why we would serve on the facility improvement committee, to be honest. So, I, I just don't recall. It seems like it just morphed into it.
I think you took it on both to try to have an idea of, finger in the pulse.
Sure.
Well, no, I, I, I took it on after the vote last year to defeat, that defeated the school, um, to try and like bring our board and their board back together and start working together, um. And to help with the renovation, you know, um, of Griffin. And those are my big reasons for getting on board. Um, and then, you know, this past cycle with the school board taking a position on the police station, and that's when I felt I should resign, cause I didn't feel it was, I didn't think that was proper, and I also didn't like the direction that the, the, the facilities commission was going. They're looking at a major renovation versus, um, a renovation that, that really is what needs to be done, in my opinion. Um, and I think, personally, I think the idea behind it is to try to make that number so big that the people would rather have a new school, which has been voted down several times. And in the meantime, Griffin gets nothing done while all this is going on. I actually wanted to see warrants this year to start addressing Griffin's problems, and it didn't, it didn't come through, so.
They seem like they've spent a lot of time, like trying to talk and trying to agree and. I think, I think this last meeting I watched, it seemed like there was a lot more planning.
Yeah, they, they're getting to that point. And there are some good people in that community.
That though, Bob, I hate to see you leave that place.
I think Bob needs to rest.
Do you want SIP or economic or any of that? Would you, I mean, I'm up for whatever, but I'm just saying if that's something, I mean, he's done a lot. Budgeting, I'm sure is very time consuming. You know, it's, it's, it's a big thing, but I'm just saying if you wanna take something here.
He's got, he's got.
His energy still, right? I don't know if anybody wants energy.
So, they will meet, um, hopefully in August when we have a.
Nope.
I'm just saying, if you had your heart set on it. I just like its numbers.
I see Bob having fun on rec. And that's why you move people around, so people don't get overworked. You shake everything up and then you.
So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna school, fill school facilities.
No.
May I ask if the chair will, um, alert the school board that the board won't be participating?
If that's the will of the board, yep.
Were we there because it was a courtesy, was it?
It was a courtesy.
Yeah, I, I just didn't, I didn't go look at their bylaws, but I didn't realize it was a position they asked for. I just thought it just conflated. I, my thought was you join it as a resident because you had an interest and also then it kind of conflated.
And a background in the.
And it kind of was a building, to kind of build that bridge. I think they're at that point now where they're really now gonna bring it all forward to get the board, the school board to see the path forward.
They seemed much more organized in their last meeting. They asked some good questions and I think Marilyn reads.
So, I'll, I'll reach out to Andrew Cutter and let him know that.
He'll take that in the way that it's.
I, I, it, it, yeah. I, I think he will too.
Cause it would be nice to see areas where we could work with the school.
Well, I, I, I don't think, I don't think us being actively involved in the F I C going forward is a indicator we're not active. We need to get together with that. The, I, I suggest we probably have a meeting with the school board, like we've done in the past, and just talk about their priorities, what our priorities are, and see where we're, where we mix well together.
Even if it's just chairs.
Yeah, that's what it's been in the past. Chairs was fine. And that should be fine. Um, I think we, we obviously had different missions, right, and different priorities, and I think they don't always gel well together. But I think the leadership of that school board understands sort of the, the people and what they really want and what they don't want. I, it's gonna be interesting to see what they do on these decisions, right? The F I C has done a lot of work and they make recommendations. Like I say, they may not even line up with what you think is right. I'm wondering how much it lines up with what the school board thinks is right too, right?
School board knows, and that's, you know, like coming in here, as, as the, the town has spoken. That happened to them last year. It's happening to us this year. Um, and I think that that school board understands that. They, I think that if you watch that, um, F I C, that they, um, that they talked about that, that, that. That if they put this stuff forward, they can put it forward all they want and the town just isn't voting for it.
Right, right.
So, they have to come up with the best.
Yeah, it's a shame, cause the towns, they've been bringing something forward for G M S now, since the time I moved in town, and it's never been passed. And it's always been, it's always been a controversy and it's never been resolved.
Yeah, people are gonna have to decide to work together. It's, you know, I brought up in an example of, I was a boomer and I had to do split sessions for years and years, because there was only gonna be that amount of kids for, you know, how long it was gonna be. And to put an infrastructure for that group forever, you know, it just doesn't make sense when we're in declining enrollment and all that kind of stuff. It was a similar way to grow up and you have to all work together to make the town work. That's, that's where.
All right, anything else on committees and boards?
Still need energy, right?
Yeah, energy, yeah, who?
I'll take, I'll take energy. I'll do planning and energy.
She don't want SIP? Actually, it's a fun meeting.
I think Bob's gonna really like rec. I think he's gonna, right up his alley.
I think you guys have done a lot of years of working on the board, is, is, you're gonna get, you need a break.
It'll be kinda nice, because you know what? When Richel Salas first started wrecking this town, I was, I helped him out a little bit.
Did you?
Along the way, yep, with the first renovations at Dara Hall.
Yeah.
Which had sat vacant for years.
Yeah, if you get really bored, Bob will, will find something for you to do on conservation.
Rec has a tractor and Bob knows how to drive the tractor.
Damn right.
Yeah, too.
Get him a hat.
So, last.
Dad can bring him, dad can bring him juice. Juice, I'm saying juice on.
She knows what kind of juice to buy.
Yes, gin and juice.
Yeah, can, can you have some?
Yeah, last year, um, Selectman Leary and I met with Mr. Cutter and the new superintendent, and I think that meeting was extremely helpful. Um, I do wanna say that the town, um, department heads, including myself, have had an excellent working relationship with the new superintendent and the new business administrator. Never before have the warrant, the voter guide, the annual report gone so smoothly. Um, and so, that's an important relationship. They re- they really, they had at least twelve, um, school staff come in here and help us get out the voter's guide. So, which we haven't had in the past.
It would have never happened under the old leadership of the board or the S A U. It would have never happened.
It's a new world.
It's a new world.
Yep.
A new world.
Brian's quality guy.
Yeah, everybody seems to be really happy.
All right, so we have that all done. Moving on to town administrator and selectmen reports. Mrs. Kleiner first.
Um, so last meeting, um, the COMCOM was here and they spoke about Arbor Pro and having Arbor Pro do some work to Dara Pond. The board asked about an abutter's notice. So, on your portal, um, down below is a copy of that abutter's notice. Um, they sent it over to us, so they, good look at it.
Oh, good.
The road agent, the building inspector and I did an inventory on twenty Lock Mill. So, we went in and, um, took pictures and did an inventory of what's left inside. As long as the building inspector looked at it as far as, you know, repairs, the, the home is in, in good shape. Um, it really is. Um, and so, now we are just waiting. We have all the pieces we need. We are just waiting for town council, um, to tell us about the probate issue. And as soon as that is set, um, then we can move forward. We'll probably need an auctioneer for some of the things inside the home. That's not town property. We do not benefit from that sale. That would go right to probate, um, after the auctioneer costs. And then, of course, we'll auction off the property. Um, and we'll bring back both contracts to the board as soon as we get the okay from legal to do so. Uh, the next item's a little bit more concerning. Um, so, I spoke about Senate Bill two ninety-seven last meeting. This is the one, um, that's being put forward on risk pools, um, of which Primex and Health Trust are both risk pools. It appears as though that legislation is probably going to pass. Primex doesn't have as much of a concern with it as Health Trust does. And Health Trust has been speaking with all of its members in sp- in fact, I got a phone call, um, from the leadership last week. What was more concerning was the communication that we received from Health Trust on Friday, where they have told us that their board has voted. And if the legislation passes, Health Trust will not continue to offer group health insurance.
Great.
They will run out twenty twenty-five, um, and then any run out on medical claims that have been incurred as such. We are sincerely hoping that, that it doesn't come to that point. But it doesn't look good.
What would the state do if that happens? Because that puts a lot of towns at risk.
Lot of towns. The concern is, so, it would, it would be a, a cost to our budget, because we would be required to have, if the, if, let's just talk if S B two ninety-seven passes. If S B two ninety-seven passes, every town that's a member of the group would have to have their own reserve, not just Health Trust's reserve. Their own reserve, which would be about four percent of what you annually pay to Health Trust. Okay, so we need a, a reserve of, you know, five thousand dollars. That's, that's not the end of the world. The end of the world is losing Health Trust, I think, but, um, Health Trust would be required to also have a reserve higher, much higher than what they have now. And they would have to charge us back, all its members collectively. And, and I think that's the point where they are concerned that they may not be able to price within the, their members' means. So, there's very small groups. There's inter-local, which I think the town had at once, one.
Sounds familiar, yeah.
I don't know. We're just hoping we don't get to that point. We're watching it and there's another. This is in, at the Senate Finance Committee, um, and they generally meet on Wednesday.
Did you talk to our reps?
So, we have not, but one of my asks is, I think, not just on this item, but I think there's significantly now a few items that it would be good to have a meeting between the board and, and.
I thought we brought that up a while ago, so it's probably time to do that now, yeah.
I, I thi- I think it really is time to do it now, because you have the other legislation, one of the other bills that's out there right now is, would take away our ability to have N H M A. Because they pay staff to go talk to the legislature on all of members' behalf. Um, you would no longer, the towns would no longer be able to.
So, they're trying to stop lobbying, basically?
It's an anti-lobby bill, but I don't call N H M A lobbyists. They live by a set group of rules that we all vote on. And they only go and speak on behalf of the towns and the committees on those proposals that we've agreed. So, I don't think it's the same as a lobbyist, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. Then there's the, uh, the legislation on extraordinary circumstances where one of the, um, caveats is a zoning board couldn't refuse a variance unless there were extraordinary circumstances. And no one really has a real clear definition of what extraordinary circumstances is. But this legislation seems to be passing.
Then why have a zoning board? Just send them free for all.
Right, and, and so, one of the things that they'd have to show this extraordinary circumstances on is all towns would have to allow residential plans in commercial zoned areas unless the town can prove extraordinary circumstances exist where that can't be possible. Well, what's extraordinary circumstances? No one can put a definition to this. So, that's another one. There's a, there's like five or six that the staff and I have put together to say, oh, these are problems. Um, and, and they seem to have some links.
I didn't think that though was doing well.
According to today's report, it had an expedient to legislate and then the majority went with ought to pass. It changed, so. So we're concerned. Um. And so we thought if we put a group, uh, a list together and we could get a meeting between you folks and. Um, our reps, it might be a good conversation to have, just to put it out there.
Yeah, I just would have some pre-work for us to let us know all the, well, all the bills that we, that we need to look into and understand before we have the conversation, but yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you've been giving it to us every week.
Put a list together and I'll send it to you.
And notify them, yeah, because they need time to look into them too if they're not on the committees.
Yeah, share with them the ones we're concerned with, that you may get questions on these and just so they're prepared.
Okay.
Um, and then I think we need to think about what our asks are too, right? In a day, what are they doing for Litchfield? Right?
Yeah.
So we have a, so. Okay.
Um. I, I have to put this on the website and I haven't done so. Um, there's a mobility and transportation meeting scheduled by NRPC. At the library for May fifteenth. This is anyone, um, worried about transportation issues in Litchfield. Um, and I, I.
Does that include our police department?
Good fun.
Wheelchair and vans. No, it really is. It's wheelchair and van.
Um, so I'll put the, the flyers on your portal, but I'm gonna post it to the website. Um, in the past, there's been, when I first came. We received some concern about elderly residents getting to doctor's appointments and things. Um, and we were able to work out caregivers out of Manchester.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but maybe that, this issue has raised, um, more questions. Litchfield Night at the Fisher Cats hosted by our Litchfield Veterans on July nineteenth. Um, we do have some tickets here. I have about twenty tickets here. Um, but the flyer also has a Q R code, um, where residents can go and so we will get that posted to the website as well. That should be really fun.
I'll have tickets also for that, um, if anyone wants them. They're fifteen dollars a piece. It's not bad. And they're gonna do a whole, it's a dedication to Litchfield Night. Let kids walk on the field and things like that, pre-game stuff. It's gonna be a good time.
Sounds fun.
Like to sell it out.
Um, I don't know if the board remembers, this is quite a while ago. It's kinda been a long time. Uh, we've got a clean water grant to build an asset management program for stormwater assets. So all our culverts, all our. Um, and thank you to Selectman Burnell for doing the I T portion of that. Um, and our highway, our road agent and our staff at highway, they worked really hard last summer. Going out and documenting all of the assets. Then our contractor that we're working with, um, has had to put together a manual for the system. We've been working with D E S. We just had a meeting with D E S and they think we are at the closeout phase. So the closeout means that D E S, our contractor, highway, we need to come into you and present. Um, and then we can go and close out and get the thirty thousand dollars to reimburse all the costs that we've had. So we are asking if we could do that May twelfth. Both the contractor and D E S are available if that's acceptable with the board.
Probably better than any, better than any day at this point.
Um, we wanted to let you know that Phidium and Consolidated have applied for a trench permit. Um, so our road agent working with our town engineer. Um, came up with the cost of the ten thousand ba- dollar bond, which we will require. Um, it's a low bond amount because they are only going to be in the grassy right of way. Um, along, um, the Passacon Way development. Um, it's, and it's only a portion of, from Midway Ave to Nattacook. Um, there's no roadwork, so they're not interfering with the actual road. Um, so there's, and we've said no digging before April fifteenth. So we just wanted to let you know that the road agent can approve trench permits and, and he's going to do that with the ten thousand dollar bond.
And I assume all the people that are on that road are gonna be notified?
We have told them that they have to notify.
And then they'll also get the ability to get Phidium fiber? Get it to Comcast. Let's hope.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, selectmen reports. Let's see, uh, recreation commission is Kevin. He's no longer here, so. Uh, I don't think he was at the last meeting anyway.
No. When is the next rec meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Let's go and interfere with Taco Tuesday.
You could probably bring some for the whole board. It is recreation.
Yeah, you could. Just have an early one. Do the four, you know, four thirty call.
Whoever requires beer and margaritas. It's gonna be a hell of a meeting.
School facility improvement committee, I don't, I don't think you were the last one, right? Okay. There's been no budget committee meeting. I think the next one's this Thursday. Lucky me.
Good luck.
Yep, capital improve, uh, planning board.
Unfortunately, planning and heritage I've missed because, uh.
Get work.
Meetings at night with our west coast team.
Yeah. All right. Conservation, their, uh, capital improvement?
Uh, we meet, uh, next on April seventh, six thirty P M here at the town hall.
Went to economic development, would you?
Sure, economic development. We meet this week, March twenty-sixth, Wednesday, uh, six thirty here at the town hall. Now you're on that committee, right?
No, I'm the backup. Jason's on the committee, yeah, but he's missing meetings and I'm showing.
Okay, um, then NRPC, oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, NRPC.
That's, that's a good question. I'm still listed as an alternate on conservation. So that should probably be removed, right?
Yeah, you're no longer an alternate. You'll be a selectman's.
Okay.
Liaison or whatever they call it. It's fishing out of.
Liaison, that sounds good. I need a hat.
Anything else, Kim?
Oh, NRPC, uh, we have the executive committee, six o'clock P M, April nineteenth. And then we have the full commission meeting at seven o'clock, April nineteenth, that same day. That's where we have all the thirteen towns. We have D O T and the federal highway department at that meeting. That'll be April nineteenth.
I should say on the planning board, I did watch it. And there is, um, across from your sister's house, the person that owns that property and their neighbors, their kids, I think. Um, they're gonna subdivide that and split it off, but what's gonna happen is two houses are gonna add property. One big piece of property is gonna be split into three, but it's still gonna be a pretty substantial piece of property. Um, and they're gonna be working on, or we're gonna be working on, um, reviewing our bylaws and old ordinances and doing workshops moving forward.
So I'm not, wasn't at the conservation commission meeting as a, um, liaison last month, but I know they're still working really hard on that DeRosa property. Um, and I think they were having some problems with the lawyers' view of the title versus the granters', um, view of the title.
It's back, it's, it's.
Has that been resolved?
It's, last I saw it went back to Joe, but I haven't seen an update since that was just past weekend.
Yeah, he was having trouble working with Joe. Is there any way you can help with that?
So I, I, I believe the last communication was that Joe has asked to speak with the DeRosa's attorney.
Oh, DeRosa's attorney, okay.
Okay, can you just like be on top of that just a little bit? Because I know there's a timeframe as far as losing those grants.
Yeah.
So we really need to get that done. And I know that, that the DeRoses would like their cash as well.
All right, I, I will. I'll check into.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Yeah, I did, uh, seeing you kicked off the conservation, I do have a couple of dates, so.
Sorry.
That was one of them, but that's okay.
Sorry, John.
That's all right. Um, this, this, it's quick updates of the intern. They're still in the selection process. They're gonna meet with the Hampshire Conservation Commission tomorrow to talk about that selection. And then obviously the DeRosa update. And then the other thing was they are beginning their spring cleanup. They've been out there, I think they were out there last, this past weekend. And they're starting to go a full force on that stuff, so that's it. There was no emergency meeting, so that's it. And friends, he hasn't met neither, so that's all for me. All right, um, any other business to come forward before our non-public?
Steve, is rec start at seven?
Yes.
At Dara?
No.
No, no, right here.
Oh, here?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven here. Seven is it?
Yeah, that's seven. Yep. Um, all right, if there's no other, uh, no other business, we do have a non-public session to go into. Um, under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two. Section C, matters which is, if discussed in public would be likely affected adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of fee, fine or levy, or other, or other levy. If based on the inability to pay or poverty, poverty of applicant.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public at nine thirty-three P M.
Motion made by Mr. Gannon, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna be going into non-public. This will, uh, conclude our public meeting at, I think I got the time on my clock here. We're just going crazy. Nine thirty-four. Uh, so we'll be, we will not be coming out of, uh, we will not be coming back out of non-public. We'll just be closing the meeting afterwards. Folks, have a good night. See you next two weeks.